Yep.
We ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting, which will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as the Avalon Housing Authority for February 6th. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you wouldn't mind standing for a few minutes to remember Paul Rojo and Mitch Carroll, who all passed away within the last couple of weeks. Please be seated. And Mrs. Raddie, if we may please have the roll come.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. Okay, we have two presentations this evening. The first one will be the Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce presenting their 2016-17 audit.
Jordan's doing it for you.
We were fighting each other on the screen for the mouse. And I think just so my glasses don't fog up, I'll risk it for a moment here. All right. Am I good on the mic?
Perfect.
So, good evening. Thank you for fitting me into your schedule. I know we're a little later than either the city or the chamber intended for this annual report. We did meet the deadline of filing that has, the new deadline that was created last year, which was the first day of business in the month of November. However, between city scheduling and trying to wrap up some business before the city manager exited and my own travel schedule, this was our first date that stuck. So, apologies for the delay, but, and it may confuse in our brains a little bit what I'm saying this year, and I actually kind of mean last year here and there, so I'll do my best to be clear as I go forward with that. So, first I'll take just a quick look at the year in review. I promised Denise I'd be only 10 minutes. I'm gonna do that. The website enjoyed excellent traffic with new content being added to include blog posts, an interactive tool called Ask Lena. If you haven't played with that on the site, I'd encourage you to look at it. We launched that to provide a quick response to travelers' questions and simultaneously enhance our FAQ page and search engine optimization. As the questions and answers are curated, once they come in, they become searchable for both Google and a casual user of a browser on their own computer. Mobile use of the site grew by 7%. Come on.
Jordan.
There we go. We also wrapped up during the fiscal year our visitor profile studies, so I just put a couple slides in with some of the highlighted takeaways because I think they were important to have in mind as we talk about some other items later in the presentation. So, I won't go through all of them in detail here. And some more of the results here. Not a surprise to most of us doing business on the island already that we're having the majority from California and the majority coming for leisure travel. This slide, I think, probably has something that I'd like you to really note. The average visitor spending on the island is $127, and the average overnight visitor spends $163. That's low for California spending, so something to be aware of. And many years ago when I left Ventura, our average daily visitor spend was $185, so...
That doesn't include transportation?
It does include transportation.
And hotels?
Overnight includes hotels, day does, the other one does not.
Yeah, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
I think it's because of the cruise passengers being factored in. They're not including their cruise fare. It's including the ferry for the day trippers coming on the ferry.
But the cruise passengers aren't counted as overnighters, right?
No, they are not counted as overnighters, so they diminish the average for the daily spend probably because of that transportation factor. I have the details of the study. I can pull that out.
Thanks.
So, the economic impact as a result of that, based on 2016, spending on the island was $115.6 million. And that equates per household to a tax savings of just under $5,000. That's high, and that's because of our small population. So, we were low on the visitor spend, but we're high on the incremental savings. We also completed and implemented a sales and marketing strategic plan, and on the screen you can see the audiences we're now targeting under that plan. And we continue to work on these social media channels, and we're putting considerable effort into adding video content, not just for YouTube, but now we're doing that for Facebook and Instagram as well because the levels of engagement on those two channels are much higher now with video than in prior years. Our Catalina Island Facebook page and our Chamber Facebook page, some of you have been in meetings where I may have previously announced that we were planning to merge those. For a variety of reasons, we have not yet done so and have currently put that decision on hold. Combined, we have 50, 60, 70, 80, almost 90,000 followers. No doubt some duplication between those. We may evolve the content on one channel versus the other if we continue the two streams. And here you can see that it's a high propensity for travel. We know that most travel planning is done by a female member of the household, so we're a good match in who's following us on Facebook here with 73% of our Facebook fans being females. We continue to have our destination page on TripAdvisor, and that gives us ownership of that page, which helps to keep at bay the advertising from competing destinations on that page. That's one of the main reasons to have it. Also helps in search engine because they're one of the more aggressive OTAs that's building content of their own all the time, and as long as we own the destination page, at least we're in control of most of the content that comes up there. So, another area of social media is, whereas we categorize it as social media, is our consumer email blast. We sent 18 of those in the past fiscal year. Our subscriber database continues to grow, and we are offering less and less in the way of contest and giveaways there now and doing more to engage them with good content in hopes of having better signups that are more indicative of a genuine interest to travel versus just getting something for free. We continue to expand our efforts on the group sales and marketing front. This is one of those areas where we can grow the spend of the visitors considerably and get them to come in real need periods. As you can see on the screen here, we issued during the fiscal year 203 RPs that had they all converted would have had a room night equivalent of 5,880 rooms. Obviously, they haven't all converted, and they wouldn't all be in the year for the year. They have a long window. We're currently seeing leads up to about three years out on those. We've stuck with our tried and truths so far on our trade shows and Concierge Association meetings. We'll look at change again based on attendance of those shows, but so far we've made no changes. And the events, pretty much throughout the year that we put on saw increased attendance and increased participation among island businesses. I called out some of the ones that had the most impressive growth here. So, Taste of Avalon attendance was up 16%, Triathlon participation was up 14%, and Shop Catalina was up 5%. And in this case, this is one of those where the calendar year might trump us, the triathlon to which I'm referring is a whole year back, not the one just behind us in the month of November. We continue to work with the city on processing and issuing film permits. We issued during the fiscal year 19 permits and hosted seven location scouts, and a couple of them, especially the ones that are on the screen here for the Netflix show, Mayor, I heard you talking about binge-watching just before the meeting. Here's one you can watch and catch up on, Love. They filmed their final episode. The show is retiring after four seasons, and they filmed their final episode here on the island a few months ago. And those are driving a lot of room nights when we get a big shoot like that, so that's another added benefit to the community, not just the exposure. So, some of our success measures that you already know because you hear them all the time from Robert Messers, so I'll just quickly go through them for the audience. TOT was up 4.1%. Occupancy was up 1.2%. We had more months this year than any of the years in the city's tracking where we had 70% occupancies, so that was a nice milestone to see. Ideally, we would have that annualized. We struggle for that often when we have weather-related cancellations and not being a destination like a lot of our mainland competitors who enjoy a lot of international visitation. We get some, but they get a lot, so that makes for a lot of that difference in occupancy. Admissions taxes increased 4.4%. Both cruise and, well, cruise ship warfage was more or less flat, and cross-channel warfage was up. Sales tax increased significantly. And our passenger counts were up. You may have seen recently in the newspaper that we hit the official million. We've been saying we're about a million. We hit the official million passenger count for the calendar year. This is a slightly different measure here being the fiscal year, so it doesn't quite jive with the 1 million count here. So, now I'll hit some of the highlights of the audited financials. I'm happy to report that the auditors had no material findings. This year we shopped for, we went out for an RFP on audit, and we ended up settling with the same firm, but in order to have different eyes look at us, we asked for different members of the audit team. So, we ended up selecting the same firm but different audit team. They recommended just some minor sort of housekeeping changes in how we're dealing with one reporting issue. We've already resolved that with a new monthly report that our accountant prepares for me. We got our accounts receivable down by over $27,000 at the year end. That was a significant and important milestone for us. We undertook leasehold improvements on the visitor center. We actually undertook them in the prior fiscal year, but the last of them fell in this fiscal year, so we had another $30,000 toward those that came through. And we had, over the course of the prior two fiscal years, we've had that group sales and marketing program that I mentioned that the billing finally, a lot of it came through in this fiscal year. So, we had a $90,000 extra expense in ad placement, but most of that was funded in the prior two years, so we had the funds banked for that. On paper, we report a net loss of $119,262, and I've inquired of the auditors whether that was concerning to them or whether they felt it was indicative of any sort of trend based on our current spending, and they said it did not, that it appeared to be very much a matter of timing in long-range programs coming to fruition in the fiscal year. And just as a subtlety, because I know this has been out in the community, we are, in the course of this fiscal year, repaying $33,000 to the city in overpayment that we received based on the city's estimate last year, but we had already spent the money, so we're paying it back slowly this year. So, some detail on how we spent the TOT dollars that you allocate to us. For marketing, we spent $1,052,818. For visitor services, $155,671. For events, $212,989. And that is a total of $1,417,478. The total amount after the adjustment that you allocated to us is $1,167,800. And we had, partly how we funded that difference and other services we provide was with earned revenue that this year totaled $504,959. Sorry, I wasn't hitting the button fast enough for these animations to come up for everybody, so catch us up here. So, for the fiscal year that began July 1, we have had a staff planning session and conducted a board orientation and implemented goals around not only that staff orientation but, that staff plan, but ongoing input from our various committees. Some of our goals and achievements for the fiscal year that began July 1 are outlined here. The completion of a capacity or a supply and demand study have been presented to the board, and they're now posted on our website. I've included in your packets a hard copy of that study. Among the takeaways in that study are that we are not actually exceeding capacity in an ongoing fashion, but that there are obvious times when we overtax our systems and impact the visitor experience negatively, and we all know that also impacts us as residents in a negative way as well. By reducing incentives to travel in peak demand times and instead using dynamic pricing strategies to drive visits to the off-season or weekdays, we can largely address the burdens associated with too many visitors at one time. It's imperative that we work together to live within our means for water, landfill, and quality of visitor experience and resident life. We'll be going out to RFP for the production of our Visitor Guide. Our multi-year contract is expiring on that. I have put on your tables the most recent edition of the Visitor Guide. It just came out this past week. That same company is currently producing our Pocket Map. We like having those as a bundled service. There's a lot of efficiencies, so the new RFP will be both of those combined, whereas they have been previously two standalone RFPs. We continue to look at whether or not this is the year that we go out to bid for a full agency, full ad agency service. We'll revisit that as budget becomes more apparent to us. And on the horizon, with the recent announcement of Exceptional Music's departure from providing a lot of their services on the island, we will now be revisiting both the concerts and the New Year's Eve events for which we've previously had their services. We have not yet determined the viability of concerts with them or with another provider. I feel like the sort of announcement got out there and announced a fatal loss a little ahead of the way that I would have liked to have massaged that, so... And if anyone in the audience is so inclined, we do have a variety of standing committees, so I always put this up here and make the plea. We always look for help with membership. Nominating is not an ad hoc committee. It's a standing committee. Marketing and the Groups and Events Committees. So, in the fiscal year, we have hosted, or in the new fiscal year, we have already hosted Visit California on the island, and shortly we'll be hosting the Southern California Chapter and Northern California Chapters of Meeting Planners International for their conference. Sorry, I double-hit the button. Go back here. And at the staff level, we're working through possibly changing Restaurant Week into more of a Food and Wine Week. There's a lot of Visit California information on the benefits of doing that that we're putting into play here. With the city, we're working to enhance the holiday lighting and events as well at the Fourth of July fireworks. Our co-op marketing that is supported by funds from the Catalina Island Company and the Catalina Express is under redesign and relaunch with outdoor advertising and digital campaigns that target Bay Area travelers and leverage the number of flights currently serving Long Beach, LAX, and John Wayne airports. We know from studies already referenced that San Francisco households enjoy high volumes of travel, have large amounts of discretionary income, and spend more when visiting the island than their Southern California counterparts. Separate from the co-op, we do continue to target, as our primary audience, Southern California travelers. And a member of our community was in San Francisco on business today and texted me a picture of one of the outdoor advertisements that he saw in San Francisco. He was very happy, and that's Levent, whom a lot of you know. In the past city council meetings, the quality of our customer service and concerns over alcohol over service have been expressed, so we added training this year in our fixers to address each of those issues. And we'll once again be hosting a Council Candidates Forum and hope to soon be able to announce that date. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Questions of council or of the community?
I'm curious, as far as the entertainment down on Front Street, have you reached out? I know you're pretty hip to entertainment, like myself, and I think it's a great thing that Exceptional Music was a good thing, but LA being so close, I know a lot of the clubs just promote their clubs with different entertainment agencies coming in, so is there any chance we can reach out to?
I have probably 20 entities that either were already waiting in the wings or have contacted me, having heard. I also have a meeting scheduled later this week with the company that the island company has now engaged for their AV to inquire what they are going to bring over as far as equipment and everything that might live on the island that will inform me better about how to have those other conversations about what we can host and what has to be brought, depending on the particular...
Our stage sound and lights, the whole production?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there's, it's LA, it's the entertainment capital of the world, so I'm thinking that there might be something right here at our doorstep that we can maybe patronize to bring them over, and they might be happy to do that, so I'm looking at that pretty optimistically.
Okay.
How about you, too?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Good deal, Jim.
It wasn't a change we were looking to make, but here it is at our feet, so we're going to figure it out and make it the best we can as a result.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. That was very thorough.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And it's also very pretty.
Nice graphics on it.
Yeah, I know, very nice.
Yeah, it's really neat.
And now we have Adeline Young from...
Southern California Edison.
You live in a beautiful city, that's for sure.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Adeline Young with Southern California Edison, and I'm joined by my colleague, Grants Project Manager Luke Shaner. But before, but before I pass it on to him, I just want to let you know that effective March 1 next month, the propane sales hours at SCE will be open Tuesday and Thursdays from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM, and then from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. And we will be taking the NAD out so that the community will know about this. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Luke, who's going to provide you with some updates on Prop 1 grants.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Appreciate the time and the opportunity to present an update here to you.
Is this the Prop, excuse me, before you get, is Prop 1 update?
This is the 2017 DWR D-SAL Grant Program update. It's their round four.
Yes.
So, Prop 1, is that, okay.
Oh, is the audience able to have this same brochure that we have here? Is there any of these on the table?
I can make some jokes if you'd like.
Would anybody be interested in seeing what we're seeing here? It basically gives a rundown of the different cities that have applied for grants and how much they're applying for and what those grants, what those, the grants that they're reaching out for and how much they're reaching out to the grant writers for, so... I don't know, if somebody, if somebody's interested, it doesn't seem like...
I can make those available at the front counter also, Joe.
Oh, at the front counter, okay.
I can make them available tomorrow, yes. It's the announcement, Luke, that we received.
Correct, yes, that's public information, Mr. Sampson. I'll be happy to, at the end of this, these are brief slides here, provide highlights on that, and if there's questions to that, we could speak to that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to let the public know that this was not on the agenda because we were not notified till after the posting of the agenda like yesterday, so that's fine.
Great.
Okay, so we will move on. Just a quick background, September 1, 2017 was when applications were due. Three applications were submitted for D-SAL projects. And just recently, January 24, the DWR provided draft award notifications, and that's that summary that's available through their website. And just yesterday, they had a workshop in Los Angeles, and they shared the results of that, provided some additional insight on, you know, what those who received funding, what some characteristics were in their applications, and those that didn't, weren't recommended for funding, what were some commonalities within those applications. It was a good, you know, reception of information there, and I do want to thank the city for sending Jordan Monroe there. I think it was a good opportunity for not only Edison to be there, present, but also the city, and also to have the DWR witness, both parties sitting side by side, engaging with them, wondering what we could do to strengthen applications and keep moving forward. With that, the three applications in the notification on January 24 that Edison submitted have been identified as eligible but were not, but did not meet all the funding requirements, so as such, they're not recommended for funding at this point. So, what that means in continuing to move this forward is the projects now need to be proposed through the continuous funding process, and we will have an opportunity to review comments, a broader list of comments. What's been provided thus far is, I think, one or two high-level comments on each application, but there's a three-page summary of comments on all the applications. So, we're still waiting for that. Hopefully, it comes over today, and that'll give us the opportunity to review and strategize the resubmital plan in a way that strengthens the application and award chances. Based on their award, so I believe we submitted three applications for construction projects. There were 14 total submitted across the state of California. Three were awarded and 11 were not, and so we were in the group that did not receive awards. The ones that were awarded were South Coast Water District, City of Antioch, and City of Camarillo, and the high-level constraints associated with those are identified in the package which we'll try to make available. The Continuous Funding Program, what it entails is basically the same guidelines that we followed when submitting the original applications in September. It's going to be, they have 58 million left to award to D-SALination projects through the program, and it's going to be a first-come, first-complete, first-served basis, and they did say they are going to give priority to those that submitted in September. If they receive a resubmital, those go to the top of their priority in reviewing, and they also provided us with a strategy to track changes, highlight changes, so that they could see what is done, so their review time is faster. And those awards are going to be made on a quarterly basis going forward. So, kind of the key dates we're looking forward at are March 9 is when that portal opens to submit applications again, and since it's so close to the first quarter ending, they identify that most likely it's going to be the next round of award notifications or draft award notifications will come out in June.
2018.
So, this is a high-level, very high-level grant plan. The top table is what we proposed back in September, essentially three projects for funding. D-SAL Plan 2, which is operating, water well and facility enhancements, and then D-SAL storage enhancements. So, back in August, this is what the total project cost reflected and the total request for funding. As we're getting comments, we're going to realign this and establish what's the best path forward. We may adjust a number of applications in order to provide greater benefit and strength to the application, and so that's some of the feedback we received after the meeting yesterday, directly communicating with some of the DWR folks. And so, we're looking to, prior to making the next application, filling out those columns and coming back to council and presenting this table filled in and, you know, having that opportunity to review that and forward, going forward with it. And so, just to highlight next steps moving forward, what we want to do before really jumping into anything aggressively here is receiving the full list of comments from DWR on the applications. DWR on the applications. Once we receive those, we want to prepare the resubmital plan and schedule, and provide an update to city council. After that update, we'll request support. We had, you know, a strong exhibit of letters of support from the city as well as across the state, state and federal level. So we want to take the opportunity, revise that letter draft, you know, we were discouraged by the results or the recommendation not being, the Catalina project not being identified in this initial phase, however, we want you to reconsider and believe that this proposed strategy better meets the goals of your program. And so based on those comments, hopefully one application doesn't need as much revisions, and we could get it back to DWR as soon as possible on March 9th, and then continue to update everyone and see what announcements are made come June 30th.
So as Luke mentioned, one of the things that helped with our proposal was that we did receive a wide range of letters of support, and, you know, I want to thank the city for providing their support letters. We would like to, we would like the city to consider sending a letter of support as well when we do this resubmital for the project. And so I know that, and I apologize that this did not make it on the council agenda, it was my fault, and we'll make sure that we come back and have it agendized properly so that we can provide you with a little bit more information, but we will come back and share any updates when we get that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Adeline, is it possible that from your team, that you guys could work on what you need from the city, or what aspect of support would be helpful, other than just writing a letter saying we support the projects?
Sure.
Because we will only have our February 20th and meeting before, I think you guys will be wrapping up to send in the application, so if we could get something that we could work on for our next city council agenda, it'd be better to do it sooner rather than later.
Yes, thank you.
And that also would require us as a council, if we were to ask for additional support letters from state representatives, then it would take the vote by the whole council to do that, so, next meeting would be great.
Sure, and I know that we are resuming the meetings between the city and Edison on grants, so we'll also bring it through that route as well, too.
Right.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Was there a comment made that, Edison, we didn't meet the funding requirements? So, what you said?
We didn't meet the, we weren't recommended for not meeting the, yeah, the funding, the opportunity requirements, correct.
Do we know what those are, and are we going to make corrections on that?
High-level, they provided a couple points, we're still waiting for the full list.
Yeah, that's kind of important, huh?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, like to see that, too. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Stay on them.
And I just have a couple questions. Is cost ever an issue, or are they really not able to assess if they think the cost is too high?
We actually brought that up, and Jordan was there, and because we proposed the survey prepared by Michael Baker International back in 2016 that identified the community as disadvantaged community, and so we, in the proposal, we, you know, use that as a basis for requesting them to go above and beyond what they would typically award applicants, and so that's why you saw the request was at 100% funding. They said they didn't have anything, they weren't ready to formally acknowledge if that was accurate, or if they would respect that in our basis, and I think Jordan was there to get a little more information on what that meant, because he's really has the marching orders to probably amend that, so it's better suited to support the application. But yeah, they did say that they usually don't disclude applications because of that. Did you want to add something, Jordan?
Yeah, just to clever, one of the points that the city probably could provide assistance is the disadvantaged community status, which is what makes the funding more attractive. It reduces your match down to zero, it can. But as Luke was saying, getting that income survey recognized is quite a process, so we submitted it to them, or SCE did, based on the income survey that we did, and their board didn't seem to fully accept it, so they haven't provided us any information as to why, and that's part of the review that we're trying to get back and get clarity on, to see what holes did they find in the survey that we did. The problem with disadvantaged community surveys is every agency has different guidelines that they follow, and so we follow the HUD guidelines, which are very strict, so we figured, okay, if we can meet yours, we should be able to meet everybody's, but everybody has their own, and so they're all, you know, having to compare apples to oranges, and so we may have to come back and do some additional work with the disadvantaged community survey to make that meet, not only just for this grant, but then for other grant opportunities, so we can do that. So that's one of the outstanding pieces that we have, that the city could take an active role in helping finalize, so we won't know what that'll be until we get their comments back.
Great, good, great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, do we have a question from the audience, if you'd like to come to the podium, please?
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley, could you please explain, are you resubmiting all three, or just one, and if just one, which one?
Thank you for the question. We are waiting for the full list of comments to see if one had, you know, less feedback as opposed to others, and so we want to receive those comments before we confirm this resubmital plan. So I think what we can commit to is if we receive those comments this week from DWR, which we expect to, by next council meeting, we should have that plan identified of how many applications are going in, and what scopes being included, and why that is. So, yeah, and then so hopefully we will address your question more fully at that time.
Would you be kind enough to let me know one more time what the communities were that were given the grants? I know you said one of them was Antioch?
City of Antioch.
Was it South Coast Water District, or?
City of Camarillo and South Coast Water District.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that, got it.
I mean, yeah, and we're trying, so this is, I believe, the first, this is the fourth round of funding, and it's the first time we're going through the grant application process, so there are lessons learned, and we're trying to continue to build upon those and strengthen applications and chances for success going forward, and looking at, you know, leveraging what was applied for and what was awarded, and how they went about doing it, so.
Great.
It's, I mean, it's not, I know it wasn't the message we want to come back saying right now, but we're going to press on and hopefully have a good update in the coming weeks.
Okay.
Luke, thank you very much. Adeline, did you have another comment?
Thank you.
Adeline, did you want to keep talking?
No, I'm done, thank you very much.
All right, okay, thanks. Thank you, Jordan, as well. Okay, it's time for any announcements or written communications?
I do not have any written communication, but I have several announcements. Just to remind the public, the city hall will be closed the next two Mondays, which is the 12th and the 19th, in observance of the President's Days. Vehicle registration starts this Thursday, February 8th, and runs through Tuesday, April 3rd. I'm happy to announce that 19, total of 19 vehicles have been shipped off the island that were abandoned, derelict on the side of the roads, we're still working to get some more. Any ones that are illegal on the streets, ones that have been booted that are here illegally will be shipped. I did attend the League of California Cities, City Managers' meeting in Newport Beach, and it was very beneficial to me. I did some networking, not as much as I'd like, just because of being a little more timid, but it was good, a lot of informative sessions, and then on my city clerk hat, I just want to remind the public that the last day to register to vote for this April 10th election is on March 26th, and remind everybody, and you'll keep hearing this at every, at the next five council meetings, that the only polling place will be here at city hall, and hours are from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Great, thank you. Department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, giving an update on Public Works. The consultant and city team that's working on the sediment study is meeting with various stakeholders tomorrow here, talk about how we could possibly do things differently with the Catalina Express. We're also, the geotech consultant and city team that, we reviewed the Pebbley Beach Road, working on the Pebbley Beach Road revetment repairs that were part of the damage that happened in 2014, those storms, and also in 2017, where we received money from the state and insurance proceeds, so we're starting that design. We did find some significant holes in that revetment, and we will be starting some of those repairs at a very soon date with our own crews to get those safetied up, and then there will be a larger project that gets rolled out with a contractor. I'll let Amanda talk about Vaughn's work on the foundation, she's here, and we're working on several projects at the wastewater treatment plant, and many of those are on the consent agenda tonight, and so we have a, number one is a planning grant for reclaimed water, and that, important first step with that project is that we're actually looking at the plant and getting a status of what shape it's in. And before we put dollars into it to put reclaim coming out of the back end of it, we want to see how it's running and what we need to do with it, and so that's why we applied for that grant, hopefully using some state money to be able to do that assessment. And then second, we're working on auditing the energy, the use at the plant, and looking for conservation measures, so you see an agenda item for that. We're actually looking specifically at the centrifuge that you've already approved the purchase, but whether, which type that we can get so we can save energy, and also we're looking at the blowers that operate in the plant. So usually in wastewater treatment plant in a community, it's one of the biggest energy consumers, so we want to focus on that and try to save money, and usually we go and do this type of audit, you know, within a few years, it pays for itself, some of the improvements that we're doing.
And that's electricity primarily?
Yes.
Okay.
And then third, we're working on a solution for office space. If you're probably aware of the 2014 ParsAC report where we had some safety issues that we need to look at our facilities, and one of those things is they looked at our wastewater treatment plant, and when it was built, all the major electrical panels were put in the office space. The office space is only 13 feet wide, but this was also an office space that supports five people now, and so there has to be three foot of clearance from each panel for each side of the room, so that makes it very narrow space that we actually can put the, the employees that ES has there, so it's a safety concern, so we're trying to make sure that that's good. So all of those things put together, come to analyze and help us put together that capital improvement program that we need for the plant, and so these were the first steps to doing that, is to be able to analyze and use somebody else's funds to be able to go do that. So that's what we're up to. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Bob, before you go?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have a question, just, I want to just get an update on the developers' fee, contractors' fee, where do we stand on that?
So per our schedule, we're supposed to be, have that already soliciting, you know, the document out to the public, and we're behind a week now, so I need to get that out to the public, and then we'll have our first public meeting, and then try to educate everybody what's in that document, because there is a lot of depth in there, and what the public needs to focus on is what projects we have in there, and all the learn, try to understand the calculations, how we come to those fees, because we may not be at the end in agreement, everybody may not be in agreement, but at least we're understanding what, how we got to that number for each one of those fees, okay?
Yeah, thank you, I know your plate's full, so...
Yeah, it is a little full right now.
Yeah, it's a little full.
Bob, I have a question for you. Back to the wastewater treatment plant, and thank you so much for the update, I appreciate that. One of the concerns that I had was making sure that we had a good budget, that the Public Works Department and all the different areas and places you're working on, but specifically the wastewater treatment plant, was included in budgeted numbers, because what we're seeing is oftentimes, these are unbudgeted, emergency item here, emergency item there, now we have an office that's unbudgeted. So it's really hard when, for, and I'll only speak for myself, it's really hard for me to look at the budget time and say, okay, I feel comfortable with this budget, and then each time, it's this emergency, this emergency, so I'm really personally wanting to see what the future plan is, and I think that's what you're saying this grant would be for, is that study?
Yes.
But also that we're anticipating what emergencies there could be for this upcoming year, and that those become budgeted items, so that we're not constantly adding to.
There has been some past capital improvement program, but it's not totally up to date. Now that I've been here 11 months, I'm trying, I'm almost up to fully understanding our whole system, our collection, our distribution, our wastewater treatment plan, spent a lot of time, and also working with all the personnel that actually does the maintenance on those. So by looking at all of these studies and programs, and just being out there, you will see that come into a capital improvement program.
Right.
And define that, and also, every time that we're making an improvement, just like when we went up to the Whitley, the Whitley Booster Station, or the Hill Street Booster Station, we weren't satisfied with just doing a Band-Aid approach. We went in there and we did appropriate municipal facility approach to it, and then, which has, you know, redundancy and has equipment on the shelf. We're on an island, we can't just go get a piece of equipment, so every time that we're tackling one of these things, that there is a knee-jerk kind of emergency situation is because we're not prepared. We are getting prepared each time that we step into those, and we're having those discussions of how we can have more redundancy and be prepared for those.
Perfect.
So it's going to get better, and it's going to get to the place you want to see it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, John Hawking from the Sheriff's Department. What I'd like to do tonight is go over several of our noteworthy incidents that have happened to Sheriff's Department, and then conclude with basically thanking the other first responders on the island here. But to start with, we've been continuing to crack down on the narcotic use on the island. I personally arrested somebody up at Three Palms that was, had possession of methamphetamine on them. We arrested two suspects for multiple burglaries into the city warehouse, and subsequently there have been changes made up there that I really want to thank the city for that will detour, possibly eliminate any further criminal activity up there. Some of these calls we go on, you can't even make them up, you won't believe them. We received a call of a naked male standing up on the mountaintop, howling at the moon. The deputies get there, and they see a naked man standing there, howling at the moon. They yell at him to come down off the mountaintop, he takes off running down the other side of the hill, he jumps into a vehicle that has the keys left in it, steals the vehicle, crashes it into a parked golf cart, and then runs back to his hotel where he's staying at. Well, one thing he didn't think about was the day before, he was arrested for domestic violence at that same hotel, so the deputies knew where he lived, and we went over there and ultimately arrested him. So the point of that story is, I know it's very common for islanders to keep their vehicles in their keys, I'm sorry, keep their keys in their vehicles, whether it's a golf cart, a autoette, whatever it might happen to, please take your keys out of your vehicle. It will reduce the chances of your vehicle, such as this, I mean, I don't think this person's intent was to permanently deprive the owner of their vehicle, however, he took advantage of the situation, and ultimately, it could have been a very dangerous situation. And lastly, I'd just like to thank the other first responders on the island, and I'll go name them off, Baywatch, Avalon City Fire, Avalon County Fire, Harbor Patrol, we, they have helped us numerous times over the past few months, and I hope that we help them back in return, but it's a really good working relationship, and that's what you need to keep the community safe, is that. And that's all I have for tonight, does anybody have any questions?
Questions? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just a little update on the harbor. Still got water in the bay, so we're doing good. We had a great, boy, that didn't go over very well, did it?
Sorry, JJ.
We had a good January, the weather was good, a lot of boaters coming over on the weekend and stuff. So, we did, Bob's crew fixed a float five, put new hinges in float five over there, which was a monumental task just from the standpoint that they had to work from Wednesday till Friday to get it done. And they did a heck of a job, Phil and the boys over there. And we'll be doing the same thing. We're at next council meeting for another set of hinges for float four. They're just really, really in poor shape. So, we're working on that and we're working on sending a couple of our patrol officers over to basic boating classes in March and boating under the inflow classes. So, we're moving right along and getting ready for the summer coming up. So, that's the harbor side of it.
Great.
Any questions?
Okay, so, when you take those boating classes, do we, I got to ask this question just for the community. Do we do have any swimming skills at all for these guys? I know we have lifeguards out there and we have paramedics and Baywatch and, like, is there any, like, swimming safety courses or any swimming goals that we have to do as harbor patrolmen or anything like getting in the water with your clothes in case somebody falls in or?
No.
No?
No, I mean, we don't have that. And we've tried to put that as a prerequisite as we hire, can you swim? But apparently due to the fact we've never offered, asked that before, we can't start asking it now. But I'm, I have no problem putting in a swimming requirement because there's not one of us out there that hasn't ended up in the water for some strange reason.
Yeah.
So, but, I mean, a lot of our guys that, I mean, they, during storms, they wear their safety life jackets and their PPEs. So, our guys are pretty adept to swimming and surviving in the water.
Great. That's what I wanted to hear. I got two questions. Let's see, the crane, the crane at the mall, is it down right now?
It is down. We, the hydraulic arm needs to be taken apart and resealed. Unfortunately, the people we bought the crane from back in the 80s are no longer in business. But we were able to find some seals, which was a good thing. So, that's being shipped over to Kavanaugh. In fact, they got it off today, should be on the barge tonight and they should be picking it up tomorrow. We're hoping that it'll be back up and running by the 12th, but we're not sure. Once they get into it, we'll have a better idea of what's going on.
And that's pretty much the only maintenance problem we have on that crane right now?
Yeah, on that crane. And as a backup, we need an emergency crane. We've talked to the garage and they have the big white crane. If we need to get it down there to be able to pull a boat out in an emergency, we can do that.
Is that on a, you mean on a vehicle?
Yeah, it's on a wheels. It's a wheeled, large white crane.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so, and we contacted Mark Bray and Caleb. Everybody knows, and this is the right time to do it because it's slow. So, we're down for at least a week, maybe a week and a half.
I want you to know I support putting in a ramp back in, on city property. That is a ramp where we can have an emergency access that, like the one we used to have on South Beach. I'd love to see that, that put back in because I know we're never probably going to be able to use the ramp out at the mall, although I wouldn't be against that. But I believe that having an emergency ramp could also serve two purposes. It could also serve as access for handicapped people to enter the water and enjoy the ocean as well. My other question is, I've had some people bring to my attention that the outer moorings, the front row of moorings, basically where the island companies' boats park and, let's see, I think there's a couple other big, you also put some very big yachts out there. And then also, the front moorings out in front of Hamilton Cove, that is the outer moorings. They're very dark at night and I was wondering if there's any way we could put just one of those solar lights or something on those moorings? And is there some?
You know, since we're in an area that is Coast Guard approved, we've gone through this, I want to say maybe eight or nine years ago, after they had an accident at Conley Pacific where somebody ran into it, a speedboat ran into their moorings.
Yeah.
We're in an area that is on the charts for the, for the moorings of where they're at. And so, the only problems with putting a solar thing on there, they get broke off. People come and use it, they hit the can, they break it off. I mean, it's, we, it hasn't been an issue with the darkness because we pretty much send, lead every boat out there, or we have a boat in the area, we'll send a boat out there and we'll light up the mooring for them. So, it's not a, it's not an issue where somebody's running into them with their skiffs. They tend to run into each other.
I've had some people bring it to my attention and I've been utilizing the ocean at night recently. And if you don't have GPS or you don't have some kind of a radar system, those things can evade you just because it is pitch dark sometimes out there. And if you don't, aren't aware of it and you're in a small skiff, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, I brought it to the city manager's attention and if you guys would like to.
We'll look into that.
Look into that?
And we'll look into, you know, what it would cost and the feasibility of doing it. And I mean, that's the best I can tell you right now. I don't.
I really appreciate the ones you have on the dinghy docks. They work great, they're very durable, takes just a little 5200 and they have this canter to them. So, they pretty much evade the ropes and slipping off there. And so, they do break off, it's five, 10 bucks to put another one on. I'd really like to see those, those front moorings lit up.
We'll take a good look at it and we'll, you know, maybe we could find a, you know, a better durable light that can take a, take a hit.
I appreciate your input on that and I respect your input. So, whatever you feel would be good going forward and I thank you for your time.
JJ, you might want to check with Parsac too.
I'm sorry?
You might want to run the lighting of the moorings by Parsac.
Right, and, and like all of us, we've just gone through Parsac and, you know, we've got a long list of things to fix and that particular thing wasn't on that list. So, however, I mean, if it's a concern to you, we'll look at it and we'll see whether or not it's an issue, you know, it might be an issue with, you know, insurance company once you've put a light on it and, and then somebody has knocked it off and then somebody else comes by and hits it. Now, you know, it, I don't know, but that's definitely, we can look into that.
I'll leave that up to you guys to figure that one out because I'm sure the Coast Guard might have something to say about it.
Right.
And whoever oversees the boating lanes out there as well as the insurance company, so.
Not a problem. We'll take a good look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Recommend, yeah, your boats look nice. I like, nice to see the boats all painted up again.
Thank you.
Look very nice and respectable out there. They've been a long time coming.
Appreciate it. We have one more on the list to do and unfortunately, I didn't budget it this year, or obviously I didn't budget for the rest of them, but we plan on budgeting for them next year. I'm learning the budget process and it, you know what, it's talk about your emergency, your emergency stuff, sometimes things just come up and you have to, you have to do it, you know, so.
No, they look great.
Well, thank you very much. I'm glad somebody's watching.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harbor Master.
Good evening. Mike Krug, Avalon Fire. I just very briefly wanted to remind people in the community that at the fire department and at City Hall, we have these emergency medical forms available. It's very simple. On one side is a medical form that you can fill out and put any pertinent information that you'd like on there. And then you can fold it over and stick it on the fridge so all your medical information is in one convenient place. And it's not necessarily visible to people that, if you have a dinner party or something and you don't have your medical information right there, it's at least afforded a little bit of privacy. It's printed on a high-vis paper, so hopefully it doesn't blend in with a bunch of other things you might have on your refrigerator. And again, those are available free of charge, the fire department, City Hall. And it's not uncommon where people in the same household have no idea about the other people in the household's medical conditions. So, I'd encourage anyone to fill those out anytime they want.
What if you have a DNR?
If you have a DNR, you need to have that in a conspicuous location where everybody in the household knows about it.
Okay.
In the heat of the moment, if a DNR cannot be produced, then lifesaving measures will be taken.
Okay, because if you go to somebody that lives solo and you check on them and they're down, so, you know, I wouldn't know where they, so they could, if they're a single person, they could put their DNR with that?
Sure, absolutely, they could. And normally, when people get a DNR, they're given very specific instructions about make sure that people know about this and it's posted in a conspicuous location.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
How are we doing with the fire hydrants? Did we order parts for those? Are we?
We, the fire department, doesn't, but Edison maintains the actual maintenance of freshwater hydrants and then ES maintains the saltwater hydrant. So, they, they provide parts, service, replacement and things like that. The fire department will go out, exercise and flush them, things like that and provide a report to those folks.
So, they don't really care about how they look? They, we just need to know that they function correctly, right?
Well, yes and no. Marissa goes around and she makes sure they're painted, they're stenciled, and if they need a new blue reflector, she'll make sure she does that.
Okay, yeah, maybe she's shorthanded. She does an amazing job because she does all the painting in town. And I don't think it's that easy to paint the fire hydrants, but they just seem a little, a little beat up. I know the saltwater ones, it's saltwater, so they're going to, they're going to be corroded a little bit, but, and maybe it's the fact that we can't use oil-based paint anymore, right? I think.
It certainly could be a factor.
Yeah, all right. That's great.
All right.
Thank you. If you're good with it, I'm good with it.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, our favorite project, Vaughn's. You've probably noticed that there's lumber showing up on site the last couple of days. They're preparing to build the forms to start pouring the foundation walls, so that's going to be the next thing coming down there. They have submitted their initial application for their signs and they're probably going to need a sign variance for the size and the illumination that they're requesting. So, that may be on March's agenda, we don't know, but that initial submittal has come in. I prepared a draft request for proposals for a consultant to do the work that we have received our Coastal Commission grant for. I've sent that to Michael Baker Al Woro for his review and comments and as soon as we get that back from him, then we'll be issuing that request for proposals as required by the Coastal Commission for the consultant to do that work for us. On the Planning Commission agenda this month, the Planning Commission will be discussing the 2018 growth policy and then that'll be coming before you, I believe, we're hoping for the first meeting in March. And then Trailhead also has a sign variance application that'll be on the February agenda, Planning Commission agenda as well. They're asking for some oversized signs as well. So, that's what we have going on. Anything for me?
Question. It was my concern with the Vaughn's project going in and the Trailhead project there and then just the basic impact on the city that we have in the summertime as far as congestion in vehicles, golf carts, pedestrians. Are we going to work with, do we have a plan to work with the Trailhead project and then Vaughn's and have basically a study of the entire way that traffic and pedestrians are moved through the community? And maybe the sheriffs would be involved in that? And, because the way I'm seeing it is, I remember we discussed this when they were planning the Trailhead project, that that side of the street was going to bring, that was basically people would come in from the mall and they'd branch out towards the Trailhead and we have a nice sidewalk on that side so people could distribute, be distributed on both sides of the sidewalk, basically when they get to the corner of Crescent and Clarissa there. So, and then I know we're going to have, you know, we're going to have to work through some bugs maybe at the Vaughn's project too, but do you think that's something that's a planning item that we could discuss or maybe have a special meeting for? I'm thinking that.
I don't know of any plans at the moment to do any additional traffic impact studies that relate to those two projects. Now, the two projects, as they're under construction, are going to be required to maintain traffic control and traffic flow. And they're both very aware that they're going to be in the works under, during our summer season and that they're going to have to be very prudent and efficient in how they handle the traffic. The Trailhead is proposing a new sidewalk in front of their property that will facilitate pedestrian traffic as it comes along past all those other businesses on that side of Pebble Beach. And then they'll have a sidewalk that'll continue across in front of the Trailhead projects that it can tie up to the sidewalk as it goes down in front of the Island Press Building. So, that will be a good thing. That's, there'll be a nice sidewalk, walkway on that side of the street now.
Yeah, great. That's, that's what I was thinking and I hope they follow up on that and they work with the city to make sure that that's a really smooth transition.
Yes.
So, that people can get on and off. Basically, that's how people get into town from the boat and then they get back out to, to the boat from there too.
Right. They, the Trailhead project, they have, actually have a driveway, if you recall, where their smaller Jeeps can be able to pull in there and pick up their tour guest. They won't be parking all of their vehicles there at the site. So, their proposal is to keep that very smooth operating and open, and open around that.
And they won't be.
I think it's the lift station that's in that center.
Great. They won't be parking in front of that building either, will they?
No.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a big thing. Thank you, man.
I just want to add on to what Joe was saying. Right, right now, in, at the Trailhead project, for example, it's painful on cruise ship days. Just the whole flow of the traffic, that little, the front of the project, the construction area has slowly gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. And then all of a sudden now, it's on, you know, the fence is on the outside of the tree planter and there, there is no place for a pedestrian to go besides in the middle of the street. And with the cruise ships, I'm not suggesting that it's the Trailhead's issue, I'm suggesting that it's the flow, the entire flow is an issue right now. But with that construction there, it is three times more difficult and you just, people see a fence and they're, you know, two, three feet away from that, so now they're right in a lane and you've got cars trying to go and, I mean, people are just everywhere.
I noticed when I went past the other day, and I don't recall if it was a cruise ship day, they had a pedestrian walkway delineated in front of their site, but people were just, I think they had cones and tape or something and little signs and people were just walking outside the cones and wandering across the road. So, I can, we can talk to James, the project manager, and see if they can better, one, not creep out further than they should, but also better delineate the pedestrian way around the front of the project.
Yeah, that would be really great if we could do that. It's, yeah, because it is, it is becoming a bit of a liability and then it's kind of uncomfortable and unsafe too.
And I think, too, the Trailhead is coming to the end of their big structural steel work. And so, they may not need quite as much large equipment out in front of the project once they get past that phase, so.
Amanda, back to Vaughn's.
Yes, sir.
Are they going to do repairs to the streets and sidewalks before the summertime? Bob's saying he said yes.
Bob's nodding yes. Okay, good.
Very soon.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just four quick announcements, I'll make them real quick. We are taking basketball registrations for youth basketball league. We started this saying, there's these little plastic things that people use for as credit cards and debit cards and we're taking those now. We started our online registration program and through that, we can use a credit card and a debit card. Taking those through the 24th registrations to help launch our online registration, we're doing a $10 discount. I think we're going to probably extend that to some of our other bigger programs into March as well, just to get people to get on the site for the first time, register. So, you'll continue to see some more of that. If we can wrap this meeting in the next 15 minutes, we can run up to our second spin class at Tremont Hall, the Avalon Spin Club. We started last night at Tremont Hall with, I think, we're at six classes a week and then mid-month we'll go seven classes a month, a week. And we're offering it no charge for the month of February and then the fees will kick in. We're keeping the same fee structure we had at the spin studio. in, we're keeping the same fee structure we had at the spin studio. The idea is just to get people to transition up to Tremont to try the classes. Sunday, I don't want to spoil any thunder, but as part of that, I think, are you gonna speak on that?
Yeah, please.
I'm gonna speak on that?
You are.
Community mural, the mural, community mural is Sunday from 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock. It's a community up at Tremont Hall. They are painting canvases that will go on the outside of the perimeter fencing for the Vons project. So Councilmember Cassidy, I think David Lee are heading up the project. I was just announced, and Mrs. Hunky, and I'm to announce, we are trying to get some primetimers up there for $3, we're gonna include lunch, they're gonna come up from 10 to 11:30, paint, and then we're gonna go to Coney Island for lunch thereafter. And then lastly, Spring Festival is around the corner. It is on March 29th, and we're gonna start booth registrations for that on Tuesday, the 13th, so a week from, a week from today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other departments? Okay, that's great.
Great update.
Okay, now we will go to City Manager Report.
I have none.
Okay.
Already did.
Okay, and I don't know, Elizabeth has anything else to add, since Scott's not here?
You're gonna hear a whole lot from me later.
Okay. And then Councilmember Report? Who would like to start?
You wanna go?
Please.
All right. Let's see. Last Wednesday, Mayor Marshall and myself met with members of the Los Angeles County Health Department, Supervisor Hans Office, Herlinda Chico, City Fire, County Fire, Sheriff's Department, members of the Catalina Island Medical Center, and the discussion was about bringing back mental and health services to the island, expanding those services, adult services, additional support for drug and alcohol-related services. So, let's see, the second one is Mayor Marshall and myself, again, met with representatives from the LA County Courts, District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department, Rhonda Kalish with Choices, and members, the officials from the shortstop program, and a couple others in there that I'm sorry I don't have listed, but the, we have been working on the possibility of bringing a teen court system to our community, and have determined now that the implementation of what is known as a shortstop program, based initially from our school system, that also works directly with the court system, is going to be in place, and the first meeting is for these teens at risk will be this month, I believe?
The 15th.
The 15th. So that's fantastic news for us, as we talk about consequences for actions and possibly providing a better direction and better avenue for some of our kids in our community that are at risk. I attended a meeting hosted by the Catalina Island Medical Center to discuss the upcoming ballot measure, attended a meeting hosted by the Catalina Island Company, as many members of the, the community in here tonight did regarding the upcoming plans for housing, for their housing unit on the island. And the only request that I have is really back to City Manager, I know I've asked several times, but I, I would really like to work together with whomever is the delegated person from the city on whether or not we could do any sort of rent control in town, standards, processes, how that would all work, that we can make living in this community more affordable, perhaps where members of our community don't have to work four, five, and six jobs just to be able to have a decent place to live. And that we're also not having, you know, eight different families in a two-bedroom home. Yes, that's an exaggeration, but in some cases, we've got quite a few people living in a home because the cost of living in this community is just crazy, so.
Councilmember, did you see the information I sent you today? It was on rent stabilization?
Yeah.
Because that's the new term. And it was very thorough. It's called a toolkit for rent stabilization, so I maybe we should forward it on to Planning and...
I hit the forward button, I just didn't type in the name, but this is, and I would like to give credit to Micah, who's here. Thank you for doing all the research that you have done to send information to myself and Mayor Marshall, but, but some of that is duplicative information that I have already sent to prior City Manager. So that's where I'm saying, if there's a delegate that City Manager decides is the best person for us to start working on this project, I'd really like to get the information out there, and I'd like to get members of the community involved in participating in that as well. That's it, I'm done.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Oh, just have a couple of mainly complaints. A lot of trash has been seen going up Hogsback, Three Palms area, and I know that's not, I don't think that's our property, but if we could find somebody to go up and help do that, and I really don't think it's all the tourists doing it, I don't think the tourists have the vehicles to go up there, I hate to say it, but it sounds like a lot of the islanders are throwing a lot of trash around. But if we could contact somebody to help clean that up or do that in that area, would be really nice, because I know there's a lot of people that walk around those areas every, daily, and they've come to me a couple times, the trash cans are overflowing and stuff like that. One other thing, today I had, somebody was saying to me about, I don't know if it was a Villa Portofino or somebody renting bikes, and I says, really? I didn't, I didn't know they did that. But is there some way we could look at that? I don't know. Somebody said they're not really renting bikes to them, they're just giving them through the hotel, and they're not charging them? And I seen a few bikes going down Front Street, and I didn't think they were Brown's bikes, because they informed them about not driving bikes down Front Street and stuff like that. So I don't know what the regulation is for that, or do they need a city business license for that if they're giving them away? I would like to get some feedback on that, on who's doing that.
I did receive a written complaint on that also, and one, our initial research on it is that the bikes are being, for the guests at the hotel, they are not charging. We do not have anything in our municipal code that prohibits that, it's kind of like a CUP. The House will also offer some bikes for people that are renting their homes. If it's a motorized bike of any kind, then it has to come before the council as a transportation permit.
So electric bike would be qualified for that. Okay? So they just gotta file the regulation, follow the regulation?
Yes. We can definitely be contacting them. I have other things to speak to the Villa Portofino about, so to make sure that they're providing maps, maybe, or that, where the regulations are, that they cannot ride the bikes.
And the other issue, too, is the congestion that's going on in the city. Now, we already have a bike rental place, and now these guys are getting 30 bikes, and this hotel's gonna get 30 bikes, and where does it all end up? It's, I mean, there's need, I don't know, we need to look into it and regulate it better? Or we need to get them to get licensed like they used to on all the rental bikes, so we know whose business is doing that? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. We're causing a lot of congestion now, and the bikes seem to be one of the biggest congestions around. So, I mean, something we could look at?
Is that a direction from the council? Then you'd like to have that come back to you?
I would like to give some direction to look into that, about, you know, it could get carried away here, it could be this one wants 30, this one wants 10, we have no control or regulation for that, I don't know. Just something to look into before it gets too late.
Yeah. My main, one of the things that you touched on was, are they even licensed? I mean, they all bikes should have a license.
Yes. We do license them.
But, I don't know, I thought that was kind of innovative.
Yeah. Anyway, that was just, that's all I had, is if we could follow them, let me know something about the next meeting on that, that'd be great. And that's about it.
Yeah, I, you know, I have to, I have to resonate your concern about the trash, and we did get an email about some visitors that came over and they saw a lot of trash, and straws, and styrofoam, and, and we don't have a really efficient recycle system within the community, so it's a trash can issue again. Where are we with the trash cans, too? I mean, we've, we've been talking about trash cans for like four years now, and they seem to be budgeted every year, but we never, we only got two new ones, I think.
With the Cal Recycle grant monies, is Jordan right here? No, he's left. We are trying to get permission from them to make it, because it's a Cal Recycle grant, to see if we have the trash can with regular trash and recycled next to it, if the monies can go towards that. I want to say there was some deadline of like June or July. Joe, can I get back to the next meeting to give you a full report on that?
So yeah, let's keep working on that, because I think all the other council people here would agree with me, that we absolutely need to make it easier for people to throw the trash in, and not so icky. They're really hard to clean, God bless Eddie, he does a great job, and he's, he's actually helped us, you know, get the trash cans that we have, he's tried to be innovative, more innovative than we've been. We were supposed to provide the trash cans for him, and we haven't, so he's done a great job with what he's had to work with. And then using those segues, that is just, that is so resourceful and inventive, I really like that. You couldn't, you couldn't have a better way to pick up trash on Front Street than with the segue, so. Anyway, I want to encourage people to please, if you see trash, just pick it, we might as well just do this ourselves, because if people are having bad experiences coming over and they're seeing trash everywhere, then maybe we need to do that. I'll be the first one to volunteer, to do that committee, to go up. Me and Laura York did that at one point, or Laura York and myself at one point, went up to Hogsback, and we picked up about 20 bags of trash, called up Paul De Meyer, said, hey, Paul, we put the trash, trash bags up here, and he said, I'll have our guys go up and pick it up. So Island Company was great about going up and picking up the trash, if we could just come, come around.
If we can get it for them.
Yeah, if we go pick it up for them.
Okeydoke.
And I'll volunteer for that group, I don't mind that, it's kind of fun, it keeps you in shape. And also the dog waste. If we could keep picking up dog waste, that would be wonderful, if everybody just helps out, because it's, it's just there, it just appears on your front lawn, and on your front yard, and in the street, and you track it in your house, and if we could just concentrate on that for everybody who's deficient in that area, that would be great, you know, because I, I don't, we don't want to make any more laws up, or be, you know, harder about this, or the sheriffs have other things to be doing besides that. But you know what, if you want to take a picture of somebody that's not doing their chore as a, as a citizen, you can do that, and then you give it to our code enforcement. Another thing I want to encourage people to do is please stop at the stop signs and drive safe. You know what happened to Valley Burke, and we don't want that to happen again, and George Morris, we don't want that to happen again. I see people, it's just, they're just in too big of a hurry, and they can't stop at the stop signs, and they gotta, they gotta speed through town, I mean, everybody's got a new car now, these Scions, and they gotta put it in third gear. Remember, when you had a golf cart, it was 5 miles an hour, 7 miles an hour, please just, just use the first and second, first gear. We don't need to go that fast in this town. I got people passing me up in my golf cart, because I'm only going 5 miles an hour, and it just, it kind of cracks me up, it's like, you really need to go that fast? Guess people do. I want to talk about something that has something to do, that affects the taxpayers in California, and it has to do with this car tax that has come out, this car and gas tax, and I want to encourage everybody to StopTheCarTax.org. So you go to the website, StopTheCarTax.org, and there is a group out that's trying to repeal that car tax, because what's happening in California is, the California legislatures and the lawmakers up in Sacramento, they have $132 billion to work with, your money, and that's not enough, they want more. And what I'm saying is, that's enough. That's enough, that's doubled in the last 10 years, it was 80 million, it was $80 billion 10 years ago, now it's 130 billion, and they want more. What I want to say is, let's see, lawmakers must hire, must offer a higher level of accountability and transparency in Sacramento, and we need to hold them to this. Right now, StopTheCarTax.org has a campaign going, and they need 584,000 signatures to get this on the ballot, so that we can start voting on things like this. Other words, it's, it's not just in the office, offices that are up in Sacramento, but it's in every home in, in the people in California. I just received my, my registration, and it's gone up 40%. So it went from like $80 up to $130, and that's everybody in California. And I want, I want to let you know, we, we need to demand transparency. Jerry Brown's own policy, own policy is that taxes will not be raised without voter approval. That's his own policy, but that didn't happen here. We just, the tax, the lawmakers just went ahead, and they started this car and gas tax, and wait till, wait till the gas really goes up, and this, and this really takes hold. So it was supposed to relieve congestion and greenhouse gas, and that's just, it's not what it's gonna do. It's going towards high-speed rail, which does not in itself relieve greenhouse gas and congestion. This tax money will not be used just for roads and vehicles, it's gonna, it's gonna be used to pay down general obligation bonds. So I want to encourage you, go to StopTheCarTax.org, register, and tell the lawmakers in Sacramento that they have enough money and they need to do, they need to manage the state with the money that they already have. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Following along with what you were saying, the crosswalk on the way out to the mall by the basketball courts has that same problem that the Vons crosswalk has. Cars park very close to the crosswalk, so people, they walk out in the crosswalk, oncoming traffic can't see them. Can we give the pedestrians a little bit of a buffer zone like we did at Vons? That's number one. Number two, I went to the same meetings that Cindy went to, very pleasant week last week, they were informative. And also, Viet Casino is not looking too good. The paint's peeling, or the plaster's peeling, or something's peeling, and if that's ours, I think we should maintain, and if it's not ours, we should contact the people who have it.
It's in our agenda tonight.
Oh, it is?
It is.
It's storm damage.
It's on the agenda for tonight to fix that.
Forget that.
Well, that's good.
That's good. Thanks for bringing that out.
Yeah, that's not a problem. And that's, I haven't been in any good meetings recently, so, just fine.
All right. So I went to a bunch of, and they all went to, the Housing, the Hospital, the Shortstop, the Public Health, I also went to SCAD, Southern California Association of Governments, there was a lot of information, and I was able to talk to the chief about earthquake repair and this, and unreinforced masonry and that kind of thing, which I think we seem to be in pretty good shape, based on what he was saying. There also was, two founders of Weed Maps were there, so there was quite a great conversation on cannabis, once again. I can, and I got the information, I gave one of the packets to Devin, and I have another one here. I think fortunately, because I think we are fortunate that we are taking this very slow, because those communities that are, that are bouncing into it, it's crazy. And there are a lot of testimonials on cities that, you know, how much to tax and all of that stuff, and land prices, and anyway, these Weed Map young folks are really on the ball. So anyway, so, and of course, I always throw up our situation, and they just kind of laugh about the, how's it gonna get here? But anyway, so that was good, and then I, after that, Mayor Garcetti was there and did a wonderful presentation and a video on the Olympics, and how they were selected, and the history of the last two times we were here. It was wonderful. I asked the PR person if we could get that video to put on public television, they said no, but I think that might be something we want to do at some time, I mean, we're talking 2028, folks, but, but it was, it was very, very well done. And that's it, let's go on to regular business.
Mayor, I'm so sorry, I must announce that I'll be at Gateway Cities Council tomorrow night.
Okay.
Done.
Okay. Oh, and I did go to Long Beach City College, State of the College address, which is wonderful, and they really want to partner with us, they are all about it, and I said, okay, then it's very important that you link with the school. This is, a lot of this is coming from, from sitting here. This is, a lot of this is coming from, from sitting here and really the school and the school board. So John Myers and Steinhauser were out of the building before I could get to them. But Doug Otto, who's one of the board members on the Long Beach City College Board is very supportive of us. So we've got some, anyway, we're working on joining forces. Oral communications. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken.
Paula Patterson, 221 Whitley. And taken a little bit away from Denise because she said something about that, but I wanted to piggyback a little bit about what Joe said about Councilman Sampson said about the dog poo. And so I came and bought my dog license, which is January to January, by the way. It's a great resource for the city, I'm sure, but they all, they gave me a roll of dog poo bags, which I thought was really great. And so anyway, I encourage everybody to license their dog. We're all supposed to. So anyway, I wanted to say about from working the polls and reading the article in this week's Islander, I wanted to remind the community that it is extremely important to make sure that you are correctly registered to vote and that your name and address are correct and up to date. Many people who came to the polls to vote presumed they were on the roster, turned out not to be, or they had moved and were not in the same precinct and you can still vote, but it's much more complex and time consuming. And as you mentioned Denise, the last day to register to vote in the local election is March 29th. If you receive your ballot and vote by mail, you need to make sure that you have your PO box as well as your physical address on your application or you will not receive your ballot. You can still vote at the polls if that is the case. You can check your registration status easily at lavote.net. That's lavote.net and I did it just before we got, I came here tonight. It's very simple. And this information is on the city website and in the newsletter you can sign up to receive by email, which is really great that the city's doing that. You can pick up a form to register to vote at City Hall and CPAC will be helping people to register outside of Vons, February 27th to March 24th, Tuesdays and Saturdays. We haven't decided on times yet. So I'm going to say it in Spanish too, if that's okay.
Please.
Al trabajar en los días de votación y después de leer el artículo en el periódico, quería recordarle a la comunidad que es extremadamente importante asegurarse de que esté registrado correctamente para votar y que su nombre y dirección sean correctos y estén actualizados. Muchas personas vinieron a votar y presumieron que estaban en la lista, resultaron no ser o se mudaron y no estaban en el mismo recinto. Aún puedes votar, pero es más complejo y consume mucho tiempo. El último día para registrarse para votar en las elecciones locales es el 26 de marzo. Si recibe su boleto y la vota por correo, debe asegurarse de tener su apartado postal así como su dirección física en su solicitud o no recibirá su boleta. Todavía puede votar en las mesas de votación si ese es el caso. Puedo verificar su estado de registro fácilmente en lavote.net. Eso es lavote.net. Esta información está en el sitio web de la ciudad y en el newsletter de la ciudad que puede registrarse para recibir por correo electrónico. Puede recoger un formulario para registrarse para votar en el City Hall y también ayudaremos a las personas a registrarse fuera de Vons el 27 de febrero hasta el 24 de marzo, martes y sábado la hora de seriremos más tarde. Okay, thanks you guys.
Gracias.
Thanks.
That is good.
Good evening, Pam Albers, 217 Cali del Sol, Mayor and City Council. I was looking at the city website regarding water and it was sobering news, but not unexpected because the grant process is very burdensome. And I think it does remind us though that we probably are moving into another drought phase. It's February, the rains are not coming. It'd be great if they do, but better to have a plan for that. And one of the things I'm concerned about in looking at the information that's available in terms of water usage is that we're still comparing water usage to what it was in 2013. And it's clear to me that from the drawdowns, that only Hamilton Cove water is coming out of the reservoir, whereas everything else is D-SAL. And I just want to see if in fact the city is receiving the regular data report from Edison as to how much water is being produced and used from D-SAL. And if that information could be made public, it would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, where did we, was it on our website or Edison's website or was just something we got it about the water usage numbers and how they really did increase in October? Where did I see this? It was pretty.
We were, I think it was through an email sent to you guys.
Right. I mean, the water usage is definitely up. And I don't know if we're all just trying to relax a little bit and kind of forgetting, but it still is important that we try to conserve.
Mayor and Council, I forgot one thing when I was up here last, just for the people at home. The powers, Edison's going to turn the power off from what it looks like is going to be from tuna club all the way out to the casino to the fuel dock tomorrow between nine and 3:00 PM. So if anybody's out there listening between nine and 3:00 PM, all the power is going to be turned off there. So anyway.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council Members, Mike Sheehan, 251 East Whitley. And I just wanted to compliment the Island Company on the presentation. I think that community forum, they were very, Mr. Wilhelm conducted a very straightforward discussion. They're very clear on what they wanted in terms of housing, employee housing. On the water issue, one thing that was confirmed is that early since the Hamilton Cove project back in the seventies, the Island Company has been completely absent at the table of any discussions on proliferating our D-SAL plant from that period. It was absolutely confirmed that they have been absent. And one point that Mr. Harrell stated, and it was published in the last edition of the Islander here, his statement was to the effect that it would take years, if not decades, to implement studies and permits for a new D-SAL plant. Well, I'd like, I'd like to inform him that Congressman Lowenthal was over here in August 7th, 19, or 2014. And he conveyed, he opened up, expressed and gave his support to developing our D-SAL system and to use wells, new wells, especially aquifer wells as a last resort. Subsequently to this, when Congress, when Councilman Sampson was elected, he took on the offer of Congressman Lowenthal and within two years, we had a new D-SAL plant. Didn't take decades. That being said, I think that the Island Company needs, needs to visit the table here and not focus on the water under our feet in this aquifer, which is an emergency water facility, in my opinion, at best, and even a place to store what we now have as an excess production potential for D-SAL water. We have an infrastructure immediately around the plant that could use some, some investment. And we've got lots of storage options, including pushing water up to the Wrigley Reservoir. And again, they've been completely silent on this, pushing this emergency water source. It's a, it's an ancient aquifer under our feet that should be held sacred for an emergency for the city of Avalon. And with that being said, with their participation, if they want to start getting involved with the D-SAL project, we can meet our short-term needs with their investment and some of their demands for employee housing or whatever is not dependent on using an emergency water storage. They suggested that they add what I heard to be the water guru of all water gurus that's going to come over and tell us how much water is in here. And I would suggest that maybe we turn that into a debate, ask them if that's possible because to not have an open discussion, an open debate on this would not be transparent. It wouldn't be authentic at all. Congressman Lowenthal, through some of, some of the initiatives he's put together with water storage over on the mainland, has got some, I'm sure some experts, there are plenty of experts that would like to at least have an opportunity to counter what might be presented by their water expert when he shows up sometime in the next three or four months. But like to outreach to them and I think the council should as well because it's been stated, we have an artificial water shortage on this island. We do. This island has always been in a drought since the beginning. Mrs. Belcito, who's now passed away, used to talk about how they used to collect water back in the days, even in the, in the heavy rain periods and people would conserve it. We don't do that anymore, but we do have the production capability, especially with this new plant online, to, if we properly store it, push it up to the Wrigley Reservoir for the, for starters. We have all the options we need. And to walk around this town thinking we are in a water shortage is a complete medieval myth. And I just, I just hope that they see the light and come forward and start giving us more of an open and honest discussion on our, on our water situation. Thank you very much.
And I don't know when you, when you came on the scene tonight, Michael, but that was a discussion earlier about the Prop 1 funds and that is talking about storage and enhancing the D-SAL and all of that with those, with those grant funds.
Yes.
So I think that plan is what the city and the, and Southern California Edison have been working towards, so.
I think so. There were only one component in the last D-SAL plant coming on board. And it was funding that came from Congressman Lowenthal.
Came from Don Kenaby's office.
That came from Don Kenaby.
Supervisor Kenaby.
So, you know, to imagine Catalina, you know, as the conservancy says, is not to imagine that we're, we're in a water shortage. This is something that, I mean, they are the stakeholders on the island, but they're also the answer if they want to be, but to continue to not be the answer and to be absent from the table is just not productive. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Is, can I ask you guys something? Is one of the components to these three options that Edison has given us, is one of the components pumping water up to Wrigley Reservoir?
Yes.
So that's, they actually implemented, they implemented that one, right?
Well, that's what they're hoping to get funded, yes.
Awesome. Okay, great. That's what we're working for. Wonderful.
Mayor, Council, Tony Bedrovich, 56 Azul, speaking really from the Catalina Island Conservancy standpoint. So later on the agenda, you'll be talking about the water reliability study. And I just wanted to say that I've worked on that for a while with the city manager and I know Denise and I will work on it in the future, but I think it ties into the topic we were just talking about. It's taking the long view. It's looking for opportunities of funding beyond Edison's work. And I know they work hard trying to find opportunities, but I think that's a smart decision. You know, as it's written, it sounds like it's only for the city of Avalon, but it really is looking at the island because as you know, I have hundreds of thousands of children that come to the camps and coves and they're in the same water predicament as the rest of us. And those of us that live on the island, you know, we care very deeply that we have a sustainable future here. So I just want you to think positively about that. And I think this is a good move because we have a government agency asking how they can help us fund something. I think that's a really positive statement. So anyway.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, Tony. Nice to see you here.
Thanks, Tony.
Okay. If there are no, no other, we will move to the consent calendar.
There are 13 items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is actions from the January 12th and January 16th city council meetings. The second one is amendments, proposed amendments to the Avalon Municipal Code, Chapter 4, the purchasing system. And that's just for, for your review. And if you approve it, then it would come back at the next city council meeting for a first reading to change the ordinance. The credit card purchasing policy is just a formal policy to put into place. Number four is to authorize expenditures to repair damages caused by the December 5th, 2017 storm. And those are outlined in your staff report and that's for a total of $102,000. Number five is to authorize contract for temporary senior accountant. We're very sorry to be losing Nia Bays and so we're trying to replace her with a consultant for the time period. So there's a seamless transition. Number six is to ratify the emergency repairs to float five. Yes, those are, those monies have already been expended. That's $9,942.72. Number seven is the USBR grant that Tony just spoke about. That was presented to you back in June and then it just kind of laid dormant when we had pulled it from the agenda that night. The conservancy has signed off on it and I received an email this afternoon from Ron Hyde at Edison and they are in the final review stages and it should be signed by the end of the week. And I'm still waiting to hear back from the other entity, which would be the Island Company. Number eight is the personal protective equipment coverall purchase and the amount of $10,859.11 and $10,000 of that would be covered by our PARSEC grant. Number nine is the grit drain bin purchase for the wastewater treatment plant, not to exceed amount of $34,000. Number 10 is the purchase of steel pipe for the Avalon Fuel Dinghy Dock to approve the $6,677.75 payment to Philip Steel Company for two stainless steel pipes. And number 11 is the resolution authorizing the grant application for the reclaimed water planning grant. And that's what planning, our Public Works Director, Bob Greenlaw, spoke to you about earlier. Number 12 is to authorize a professional services agreement with Alternative Energy Systems Consulting. That is a not to exceed amount of $10,000. And number 13 is the purchase of a mobile office for the wastewater treatment plant and not to exceed $30,000.
I'd like to pull number five.
Five, I'd like to pull five too.
I'm good with everything else.
And I'll pull number seven.
And I'll pull number eight.
Um, I just want to ask a question on number 10, which is steel pipe for Avalon Fuel Dock, Dinghy Dock. I was just wondering how long it would take to put in that, that lift system, once we get the pipe? Is it, is that a complex procedure?
No.
Okay.
We'd pour some concrete, prefab some concrete so that could be the mooring for the bottom to pin it to the floor.
That goes down to the bottom of the ocean.
Correct. And then the pipes pin at the deck, the diaphragm of the deck right there and it extends up and then it looks somewhat similar to the rescue dock when we get done.
Is that dock, that's the dinghy dock, right?
That's the dinghy dock.
Is that going to be any bigger than it is or are we just going to keep it that big?
Um, I'll let Harbor Master talk what his desire is there.
But this is for the ramp.
This is to get the ramp.
Okay.
So then when we have the surge that, you know, we can get the ramp up without having to bring in the caterpillar, you know, the telehandler to lift it up.
So you can foresee that not being too big of a problem and we can do it.
We're, we're ready to go.
Great, thanks Bob. That's all.
The dinghy dock, the way it's set, I'm hoping I can put another one at a 90-degree angle there.
Okay.
However, it creates another, another issue because when you put boats on 20 feet out from that and they have seven feet on their painters, now we're blocking the fairway. So we're really cautious on that one. I mean, I'd like, I started out wanting to do that, but now I'm not so sure. So we might go through the summer and see, just as it is now. We put it on that angle just to keep it out of the way of the fuel dock people. So it's on the board. It's just, I'm not convinced that we can do that.
Research and development, okay. That's, that's fine. I understand. It's, it's a work, work in progress. Thank you, sir. That's all.
Move staff on 1 to 4, 6, 9 to 13.
I'll second.
But no further comments?
I like the vote.
Call for the vote.
All ayes?
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to item five. Finance Director Fisher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How can I help you?
Well, I guess, I'm understanding we have lots of, we have lots of money. We have adequate money for something like this. I would, I don't have a problem authorizing, I just don't know at this exact moment in time that. time that we want to say this exact plan, I guess. So I guess I don't have a problem approving that we try to take care of our, some of our finance needs, but I think, and I know whatever we do, we'll need to move quickly, but I would like to kind of keep this open in regards, because there may be unknowns that we want to consider as we move forward, as we move forward. And I'm being very vague.
You are very vague because I have no idea what you're trying to say.
$15,000, right?
Right.
$115,000.
Can I ask a question? So it's $15,000, let's say it's, what, let's say in the event that we could find somebody that's already here, what, that would, that figure would be adjusted, right, accordingly?
Yes, the request is to hire a consultant to fill in for the senior accountant position until we identify a candidate and hire a candidate for the senior accountant position. We've been advertising for the last two Fridays and I checked this morning and we had not received any applications yet.
So this is basically for an interim?
Yes, for, for a senior accountant position to work with Nia Bays in the last couple of weeks that she's here and be able to continue those tasks until we locate a candidate for full-time.
And let me ask a question. What is the actual salary range of somebody like that? When you say $15,000 per month, I guess that's including cross-channel transfer, I guess how much is some of that other stuff versus?
Well, when we hire a consultant through a firm, we're talking about, they pay the person a salary, plus they have other costs that they tack onto that. And then we're in a unique situation where we, you know, the, the transportation and perhaps lodging might be another barrier.
Right.
So I'm offering to the consulting firms that we would cover those costs to try to encourage quality consultants to be able to come here.
It always gets added into their contract anyway.
So did we, did we get three bids on this or is this the number that we just came up with, the $15,000?
For professional services, I called around.
Okay.
There's two firms I've been in touch with. One is Robert Half Account Temps. The other firm is Muni Temps and I'm open to looking at other firms also.
Just seems an awful lot of money, but you know, it is what it is. I get, I get it. I, I get that part. But I was just trying to figure out how much.
Go ahead.
Just how much that person was making in this, in this position and I don't think it was $15,000 a month.
No.
And that's what just kind of jumps out at me as, as the cost for $15,000 a month.
The $15,000 doesn't go to that person that's coming here.
I understand, I get that.
But approximately of a $15,000, how much goes to admin and all that other stuff versus what they would be paying that person? Do you have any idea?
Well, as far as what our salary is for the senior accountant, is that what you're asking?
That's probably a good way to judge, yes.
It's in the 30 to $35 an hour range.
And times a thousand.
And, and this $15,000 that, per month that is being proposed is paying a consulting firm about $65 an hour for 40 hours.
Right, right.
And then lodging and transportation.
Why don't those people apply without going through one of these firms?
Well, for some, in some cases, and I looked at this and the city manager and I talked about it as well, that I estimate even if we were to have a hotelier in town give a corporate rate of $99 or $89 a night, that's still 3,000, approximately $3,000 a month in housing alone. Then you're looking at about $450, $500 a month round trip and transportation, plus then you've got parking for that person over town. Generally speaking, a lot of participants that work in like Muni Temps or Robert Half International, they're not looking for full-time work, they're looking for contract work. They want to do something for a shorter period of time for whatever those reasons are. Or it may be a stepping stone for them to find full-time housing or full-time employment. For, for a, a company such as those, they charge anywhere from 40 to 60% on top of what the rate is that they're paying for their employee to cover the workers' comp insurance, to cover their liability insurance and all of their additional expenses. So in most general situations, hiring a temporary employee is not as beneficial, but given where the finance department is at this point and the, the fact that this is a pretty critical position for the finance department, I don't personally want to see this position go vacant until the possibility of somebody that's already available on the island.
I totally get it because it's, it's open-ended. However, I just, I just want Bob and Denise to continue to talk if we approve this, to continue to talk and go forward in a manner. For example, is this a position that would have to be here five days a week? Is it somebody that could work remotely and work, you know, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, other things to maybe reduce some of that and, but only you know what could be done remotely and what couldn't. So.
Yeah, Bob knows what he needs.
Right, I, I spoke to the, the two consulting firms and both of them were indicating that it would need to be a full-time, 40-hour-a-week position to entice people to want to come here and work.
Right.
But they could work remotely and to save some of our costs. And there would be no long-term commitment, so we could, we could take it on a day-to-day basis, a week-to-week basis, based on what our needs are. We're not making any long-term commitment, but we're just asking for the authorization to proceed until we find a senior accountant.
And you're also, yeah, and you're saying as a senior accountant, you're, so far you've gotten nobody.
But the maximum is a four-month period. That's what we would be agreeing to, is no more than four months.
And we can still do an outreach to people that live on Catalina because I'm sure there's some accountants that live on Catalina.
It's already out there. The job posting is already out there, isn't it?
Yes.
It's been out there, right?
For the last two Fridays, I saw it posted in the Islander.
And nothing's been, nobody's turned to nothing, okay?
Well, that might change in the next couple of days, so, especially since we're announcing this at the meeting tonight, that we do need a senior accountant here, so. If you're out there and you're listening, please come forward, put in an application.
Maybe it could be less if we hire someone. Move staff on 5.
Uh, checking that.
Any comments? Call for the vote.
All ayes.
Item number 7.
Oh, uh, this is really just for a council discussion. I would like to participate in any and all of the meetings that happen regarding this MOU. So I think it should be talked about publicly. I would like, I would like to participate. If the council feels that we need two delegates, that's great, I'm happy to do that, but I would like the council to consider, at the very least myself, as a participant in these meetings.
Yeah, I would as well. I would definitely like to know what kind of a.
I just, the council also, in the study plan, that the USBR will provide a budget and anticipated costs, whether it's cash or in-kind, and all of that comes to you with each phase for your approval.
Okay. If no objection to the participation, then I would motion to approve.
Seconded.
So, and we'll, okay, well, let's talk about this, because when they have these meetings, so it'll be Joe, Cindy, probably a Jordan and probably a Bob Greenlaw. That's kind of what we'd be talking about. Okay.
So, so basically the whole council is going to be a member in this as well?
Oh, we all will be in it, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea, Cindy. I'm glad you pointed that out.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. Call for the vote. Item number 8. Oh, I'm sorry, Denise.
That's all right, all ayes. I will reach out to the USBR and see how that would fit into.
Yeah, let their program it, yeah.
Coveralls.
Hi again.
Who brought this in?
I did.
That's what you did.
I was just looking at the coveralls. So it's fire-resistant retardant, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There, there are level one fire, fire retardant, like brush gear they use in the.
Like the brush gear.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
It's, um, our patrol officers in our patrol boats, they have nothing and you've been around long enough to know and people have seen pictures of, you know, Harbor Patrol personnel fighting fires in nylon jackets and short shorts.
Yep.
So it, um, the day and age of doing that kind of stuff is over. We have to protect our guys and we're going to have everybody fitted for their equipment and they'll be in a bag and they'll take it out with them in the boat. And the training process is going to be to get them to put it on. I mean, that's, that's going to be the, the big thing because we're so used to start grabbing hoses, start fire pumps. We got to stop, put on our equipment and then go, and then go fight it, so.
Is it, is it as thick as what you fire guys wear, like that?
I'm sorry?
No.
Is it, it's not as thick as like what the fire guys wear?
No, it's different than bunker gear.
Light.
Yeah, this is really lightweight and it, it just, we don't have the room to put all that type of gear on our patrol boats.
So that was one of my questions, was going to be the storage of that? Is it going to be on the boat?
It'll be in, it'll be in their lockers and when they go to work, just like they grab their backpack, they'll grab.
That'll be part of their routine to take their gear, they're responsible for that?
Exactly, exactly. Each one will have a, a duty bag that it's stuffed in and they just got to take it and put it on the boat.
Now that's just because, but you're not going to fight a fire, hopefully.
Well, that's why we only have 15 feet of hose. We don't want our personnel getting out of our boats. We can fight a fire until the fire department gets there, Baywatch or Rescue 2.
Because you don't have any breathing apparatus, correct?
Exactly, exactly. So.
So that was another thing concerning me, was the breathing apparatus. So you have the protective clothing, but you don't want to get too close with that without.
No, no.
Without your breathing apparatus.
Correct. And we have breathing apparatus on Rescue 2, we have bunker gear on Rescue 2, we have personnel assigned to Rescue.
And that gets checked every four months or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and then, so would you guys, would that, would you guys say you guys are going to train with that? We train with the fire department, cross-train with them also?
Actually, they come down anyway and we do, we, we try to do, you know, much cross-training with them.
Okay.
It's usually when fires either at the fuel dock or, or, you know, our policies, cut the lines, get it to shore and let them fight it.
Okay.
All right.
So then we don't have any, the fire department doesn't need any of this, right? Correct? The overalls? Either?
And, by the way, just so we're all on the same page, when I was looking into this, I was working with, where'd you go? Chief Krug on what type of.
What kind of equipment to get.
To get and this seemed like the.
Easy fix.
Happy medium of what we want.
The Harbor Master and I spent quite a bit of time talking about this and I'm fully in support of it. It's, we plan on having some training so that the, the folks understand what it is and what it's not. It's just a level of what we call proximity gear. They're on the boat, they stay on the boat, they put a line in operation, they're not making entry, they're not.
They're not jumping on the boat, yeah.
Right, any, any kind, they're not in any kind of offensive tactical strategy where they're making entry on the boat. But if they're operating a boat, we want them dressed properly and even on Rescue 2, they're more than likely, they're going to be operating the boat and then we're going to put our personnel onboard if, if it's appropriate.
Right.
But I'm, I'm fully in support of it. It just provides another level of safety.
A little safety, yeah.
Yeah.
So you get, you have goggles or is that just, just the gear you need?
No, we just have our sunglasses and, you know, it, we don't have helmets and I mean, unfortunately, we just, we don't have the room for.
Right.
But we're not supposed to get that close.
Correct. Well, yeah, I know, I've been out there before when there was a boat fire.
Yeah, yeah. It hasn't been a long time, but, oh, maybe it has been.
And I was on a boat fire, we had, I had my shorts on.
Exactly.
Awfully warm. But are these long sleeves, JJ?
Yes. I think there's a picture in the back of it there on your staff report, I think.
It was on the back, yeah, I wasn't sure what you ordered, okay? But that sounds good to me, as long as we keep training with the fire department, I think that's a great idea.
We work very well together.
Okay, yeah, no problem with that.
And there's a grant to approve by ParsAC to reimburse $10,000.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that's good.
Bob has contacted ParsAC and they have this grant that they put out every year and we applied for it, so I was ready to come up and ask for the money, but.
Grant vendor.
But ParsAC, you know.
That sounds good.
Has come through, so when we get the equipment and we'll do a joint training, we'll take some pictures and send it off to ParsAC, say thank you very much and don't forget us next year.
Right.
Sounds good, thank you. Grant senior my question.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Item number 8.
Item number 8.
They're seconded.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, call for the vote.
All ayes.
Do we just want to take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Do I just want to take a five-minute break?
Yes. You do, Eddie.
A person or family whose income does not exceed the federal qualifying limit for lower-income families. All right, well, that doesn't really tell you anything. So it is generally considered 80% or less of the area median income. So what's the area median income? Here we go. For the County of Los Angeles, and it's set by HUD and HCD, it is $64,800 a year is the area median income. So to be low income, so then you go through and they look at what's a moderate income, what's a low income. So low income, and it's a little weird here, is $72,100 a year is someone who is considered low income in LA County. Now, it's weird because that is actually higher than the area median income, and that is just an anomaly in the way they calculate it for LA County and a couple other very high-cost counties. So for example, low income in San Francisco, it's $103,000 a year. Low income in Orange County, I think, is about $83,000 a year this year. So low income in LA County is $72,100. And then the income for a moderate-income family, and these are families of four. So all of the statistics are done based on a family of four, and then there's a scale that adjusts based on family size. But we use family of four, a household of four. Modern income is anybody who makes $77,775 or less a year. All right. So we build affordable housing. We want to make it affordable for a low-income person. The person has to income-qualify, so they have to make less than that $72,000 a year. And the housing that they're living in has to be affordable to them. So there's two prongs. They have to make the income that we need, and then they have to be able to afford where they're living. So when you put somebody into a low-income housing unit, you have to make sure they can afford it, and there's a formula. So for low income, for an owner-occupied unit, their mortgage, their cost of living, which includes a utility allowance, cannot exceed 30% of 75% of AMI. So your area median income is 64.8. You do the math, it comes out to about $1,200 is what a mortgage could be. For rental incomes, you do the math, it's 30% of 60% of AMI, and it's about $970 a month is what they're allowed to pay. So those are the numbers, the ranges that you're looking at. Your cost of living has got to be in between $900 and $1,200 a month, and then they also have to income-qualify.
And those are for the people that are making?
$72,000 a year. $72,000.
So it would totally rule out any extremely lows because we have nothing that they can rent for? I mean...
So if you wanted to do extremely low, then we'd have to do the math. But say extremely low, under the formula, can only afford $500 a month. I like easy math. So it's $500 a month. We know that to rent an apartment here, or a place here, is $2,000 a month. Right? There's a $1,500 gap. We would have to cover that gap.
Anything around a month.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So that's sort of the big broad overview. You've got to have housing for low income, and we have to hit housing, one other thing. We have to hit housing for all income levels. We are required, under our Regional Housing Needs Assessment, SCAG, you were there. They put out a RENA number, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, that hits all levels. So the city's responsible for making available, through their zoning and their general plan, housing at all income levels. We don't have to build it, we're not responsible for building it all. But we have to not have barriers to it. So you're assigned a certain number of low income, very low income, extremely low income, and moderate that you're supposed to hit during every planning cycle. You're in the second year of your planning cycle. And you have an outstanding obligation of, I believe, it's 77 units. During this planning cycle, you've hit five, based on the number of building permits pulled that you get credit for. All right. So that's sort of the big overview. What do we have here in Avalon? You have bond proceeds of approximately $4.3 million. And then you have funds that were transferred, or assets that were transferred, from the former redevelopment agency to your housing authority. And they're held in a special fund called the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, which is a little bit of a misnomer because it says low and moderate, but it really is low income. The way the law was written following the demise of redevelopment, those assets are really targeted towards extremely low and low income. So the properties that you have, you've got five or six properties there. And then we've got a little bit of cash, about $300,000 in cash, and then receivables of about $1.2 billion. So...
And that, I'm sorry, and the houses that were, the house on Beacon, those are?
We're going to get to this. I've got a slide on that that'll tell you in a minute where they all are. So how you got all of this was through AB 126. That was the law that did away with redevelopment agencies. And then we transferred through that all of your assets to the housing authority that acts as your housing successor agency. Then along came SB 341. And SB 341 regulated how the money that you got and the assets that you got as part of the redevelopment dissolution can be used. So it imposes requirements regarding the use of your real property, what you can fund with your cash, and then it also transferred your replacement housing obligations. So it used to be, under redevelopment law, that if you had some housing and it went away for whatever reason, and the agency was a party to that, we had to make sure that housing got replaced. So the SB 341 added some very strict limits on how your funds can be used. The first thing your funds are supposed to be used for is monitoring and preserving your long-term affordability covenants. Then you can spend money on homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. And you're going to see a theme here as we go through this. The funds that are left for housing are really, they're trying to target, have you target those funds towards homelessness or near homelessness. It's for really extremely low and low income. It's where the legislature is trying to focus the use of these funds. The third thing is development of housing. And then they included the five-year development requirement on land. So you can only hold your land for five years. And we'll get to that in a second. So homeless prevention and rapid rehousing is the first thing you're supposed to use your remaining redevelopment or housing asset funds on. You have satisfied all your requirements here. So then you get to development of housing, which is what we want to do. And there are some pretty strict requirements in here about the income distribution for housing. So development of affordable housing, it has to be affordable to and occupied by households earning 80% or less than area median income. So it's got to be low income or lower. And then within that, 30% of your funds have to be used for extremely low-income housing. And then no more than 20% can be used for housing between 60% of AMI and 80% of AMI. So what you would typically call low income. And then the rest falls in the middle. The other 50% goes to people who are between 30% and 60% of AMI. I know, it's a lot, sorry. There's also a limitation on how much senior housing you can do. You have not done any in the last 10 years, so that limitation doesn't apply to you. So if you wanted to fund a senior project, we would have some flexibility and ability to do that. All right. So the assets that were transferred. Mayor Marshall, this gets to your question. There's the two properties on Descanso. Those are single-family residents, and they have a 55-year moderate income covenant recorded against them. So they're taken care of, and they'll stay moderate-income housing until they're sold or the 55 years runs.
And if somebody sells them, what happens to that?
I would have to go back and look at the agreements that we have with them, but likely we get repaid, whatever money we put in to secure that.
Oh, okay.
309 and 311 Beacon Street is a 13-unit, very-low-income senior project, and that is restricted until 2047. And then we have 206 East Whitley.
Back to 309 and 311. We don't really own anything?
I don't believe, I believe we do own the land. We own the land, but there is affordable housing on it that's restricted for that timeframe. 206 East Whitley is our remaining asset. It currently has a five-unit apartment complex on it. When we were here in December, we talked about whether or not that could be available for sale, could be rehabbed, demoed, what are the options? So that's one of the things we're here to talk about tonight. So we've been here a number of times over the past, you know, five or six years, and we've given you sort of this presentation, and we've had some discussions about it. This is a slide you may recognize because you've seen it a number of times. I apologize, it's kind of small for everybody to see. So it lays out the basic housing options. The top one is building a multifamily rental project, new construction. And it talks about some of the advantages and the disadvantages. And then one of the questions that you had asked us before was to rank these in sort of what's the best bang for our buck? How do we leverage our funds the most? What are we going to get the most out of? And this new construction concept usually gets you the most bang for your buck. And that is what led you to do the NOFA. We'll talk about that in a minute. And retain CNC. So this is the category of housing that you've been focused on, and that's what CNC was working towards. The next one down is a multifamily rental project where you rehab something. This gives you sort of a medium bang to your buck. You know, it's a little expensive, you're a little bit more constrained. When you do new construction, you have some opportunities that you don't have with a rehab project. But depending on the affordability covenants that you get, you can get additional financing, you know, so there's ability to really stretch your dollars.
And we're just rehabbing existing places that we don't own?
Correct.
And?
Or one that you do own.
What's that?
Or one that you do own.
Right. Okay. There's probably more to that, but maybe you're going to get to that. For example, the people own the house, do they have, the people that own it or the people that inside? Who needs to be low income if we're doing renovations?
People who are living in it.
Okay. And there's some covenant that they can't increase the rents for so long? Are they interest loans, or is it just free money? Or is it low-interest improvement loans to the landlords, to the property owners?
So you can, we could give them a loan, but it's generally, a property owner isn't interested in paying interest on money to lower what they make off of a piece of property. So if I rent the property out now and I'm renting it out for $2,000 a month, but you want me to make it a low-income home, you know, or a low-income unit, you're going to have to pay me to make that happen. Right?
And that's what happens?
Right. So you buy, you basically buy a restrictive covenant. I would come to you and say, you know, Annie, I want you to take the house that, you know, this extra piece of property you have, and I want you to rent it to low-income people. You can rent it right now for $2,000 a month. You're only going to be able to rent it for $500 a month. So the city's going to pay you the extra $1,500 a month. And that's pretty much what the next one is too, is Rental Assistance Program. That's what you're describing. And that's how that would work. Depending on the level of affordability, extremely low, very low, or low, or medium, moderate, would depend on how much subsidy you'd have to give to make it make sense. The last, the next two are single-family projects. So you could buy houses that are for rent and then do basically what we're talking, or buy houses that are for sale, and then the housing authority would rent them out. Or you can do a down payment assistance program. Those are sort of the five big categories. And there are variations within them based on unique circumstances, but those are the five big categories of how you can create affordable housing in your community.
Payment assistance program for sale?
Uh, yes.
Oh, yes, okay.
For people that qualify.
So your current efforts, what you've done to date in the past few years, you had a down payment assistance program. It started in 2010. You funded seven home acquisitions. The funds are repaid to the authority at the sale of the property or 30 years from purchase. And then that program was suspended in 2015 at City Manager Jenkins' direction. So you had two that were pending, and those ones did not go forward based on his direction to staff to suspend that program.
If we wanted to bring it back, can we do that?
Sure. You can tell me tonight to bring it back. You have all the guidelines in place, everything's in place. We would just start a new application.
You know why they were? We suspended that?
I'm sorry?
Do you know why it was suspended by Mr. Jenkins?
He wasn't a fan of the program. He didn't like it.
Okay, I see.
So he told us not to fund it any farther, not to go forward.
How did you like the program? I mean, did it work for the community as far as what?
It's an expensive program. You know, because your rents are so high and your home costs are so high, we were funding anywhere between $75,000 to $150,000, I think, per loan to make it affordable for people, depending on what income level they were in. But we funded seven programs, or seven homes. So you got seven people into a home who weren't in a home the year before.
But there was one, one of the last ones, it was going to need to be about $250,000 to get him into the home?
Right.
I see. So it seems a little bit unsustainable to Mr. Jenkins.
It's an expensive program.
Yeah. Well, maybe he thought that there was a more practical use for the?
Well, yeah, he was trying to work on the housing project up at Tremont.
Okay.
Saving his money.
So there were two pots of money when you started this, Elizabeth. And I don't know what the first one was. I mean, the second, it was like $4 million, and there was a $5 million or something.
We have bond proceeds, and then you have, so before redevelopment was dissolved, the redevelopment agency sold bonds and generated funds off of that. And so out of those bond proceeds, you have about $4.3 million left. So those can be used for low and moderate-income housing, and that's all they can be used for.
So there's no real way to get totally out of, unless we're buying people's homes or whatever, buying people homes, there's really no way to get out of that low-low?
Right.
And that formula has to, okay.
Okay. So then you had the down payment assistance program, and that was cruising along. And then the other thing, based on the conversations with the council, is the council directed us to issue a notice because you had that pot of $4 to $5 million. And you wanted to see what you could do to get the most bang for your buck. So you asked us to issue a NOFA, which is a Notice of Funding Availability. And so we did that. And before it was issued, we brought it back, and the council talked to us about sort of what the direction was, what their goals were. The goals that the council or the housing authority set were to find a developer or a provider who could focus on these things. One was making sure that we had housing choices for growing market segments. And that was defined as both different income groups for existing and future residents. You told us to look for a developer who could work on housing that would be supportive of the tourism industry, housing for tourist workforce, and for year-round residents. We wanted somebody who could look at both. And then you wanted a developer who had sort of a feel for who we were, maintaining the community, enhancing our community character, sort of a healthy, small-town environment. Some of the words that were used during the meeting and stuff that ended up in the NOFA were, you know, quaint, unique, ecologically sensitive, small-town feel. So that's what we put out. The selection criteria in the NOFA was you were looking for someone who was experienced, particularly with project funding, who could bring in different resources so that they could stretch your $4 to $5 million and get the most bang for your buck. Someone who was familiar with both predevelopment and development activities, property management. Because we didn't want, whatever was built, whatever housing we had, to be something that the city staff was responsible for maintaining monitoring because we're not property managers. It's not really their expertise. We needed somebody with the ability to secure and leverage equity. We needed somebody with a track record with projects that prioritize environmental sustainability, particularly with a focus on water conservation. And then we wanted somebody with sort of a clear grasp of the city's vision and a track record of successful public-private partnerships. So those were the criteria. Based upon all of that, and an interview committee, staff came back and recommended to you CNC. And then the council or the housing authority approved exclusive negotiation agreement with them that earmarked about $3.8 million of your remaining funds to that effort. So that brought us to last December. Fast for an update, so CNC came. Their ENA was amended, so it runs through December of this year. They had a series of milestones in the ENA. They were to hold a community workshop, they were to do a market study. So they had gone through all of those steps and then came back and presented all of that to you in December. They, at that meeting, you asked if they had reviewed all available sites. They have, everything that was available on the market at the time. They'd met with the island company numerous times about potential sites. They'd looked at the East Whitley site, a variety of things. Eventually, they sort of focused on a potential site that was held by the island company. At that point, there were ongoing negotiations and discussions regarding an MOU and a whole bunch of issues. And so their work stopped until City Manager Jenkins was able to work through those issues. And then I think in December also, we brought to you sort of the framework for an MOU. One of the things that they were required to do was conduct a needs assessment because one of the questions that the council had was, okay, we've got this money, but what do we really need? What housing are we missing? So the needs assessment showed that you will have an ongoing need for 369 households who are at or below 60% of AMI. And then you have a need for 459 households that are between 60% and 120% of AMI. So you've got need kind of all over the place. They also, knowing that water was an issue, they put a placeholder project on the water allocation list. So at least they were in the queue, not knowing how long it would take to get water and sort of what would happen. They did at least try and get on that list so that when we did have a project, they'd be able to move forward. So that's sort of everything we've done to date. And then there's East Whitley.
Are the same limitations for senior housing, for all housing? I mean, limitations the same?
The incomes?
Yeah.
Yeah. So did you have a question?
I did, actually. I wanted to talk a little bit about this property.
Okay.
Were you going to say something else? Because I'm completely changing subject.
Because I asked, I wrote you down a lot of questions about this property as well.
I got all kinds of questions, all kinds of statements for you. You want me to keep going, or you want to ask?
Nope, keep going.
All right. So currently, 206 East Whitley has five units on site. You asked us in December to look at what could be done with that site. CNC looked at it for us. They said that based on, you know, the size, the setbacks, all the requirements, it would yield about nine to 12 units maximum. There are two approaches. You can keep these existing units and model the build-out of the remaining space. They estimate, you know, we use 10 units because I like easy math. 10 units, five rehabbed, five new ones. They estimated that cost would be about $2.2 million. Now, that does not take into consideration things like the sewer. That's just the units. They did not have the ability at this point to price out what sewer improvements would need to be done. That would be a much more in-depth review. The other option is a complete tear-down and rebuild. Again, we use 10 units because it makes the math easy. And that costs about $3.3, $3.4 million is their estimate. And that would be for a two-to-three-story slab on grade walk-up project. So the total cost to do the maximum yield of about 10 units on that site would be $2.1 to $3.4 million plus your land cost, which we've already embedded.
And because this is a property owned by the city, all of, anything that we decided to do would all be at prevailing wage?
Correct.
It seemed like Amanda made a comment the other day when she went to her planning workshop that if it was under 10 units, she was going to look into it. We may not have to pay prevailing wage. Is that, are you aware of that? She was going to look into it more, but that's what she commented last week. So, I don't know.
Um, the total project cost at six, $4 to $6 million, I think, would trigger prevailing wage. But we would look at that when the time came.
Okay. So if we remodel the other ones and put in, get up to 10, that's?
$2.1.
$200,000? No, how many?
$2.187.
10 units, that's?
Well, it's five rehabbed and then five new.
That's $400,000 a unit.
Right. So CNC estimated that the rehab is about $100,000 a unit, and new units are about $330,000. $337.
Was that going to incorporate the island factor of cost, or just the cost of what's?
That was with a bump for the island factor. I asked that question too.
And what is the rent requirement then? Is it low income or moderate, or what's there now? Is it moderate or is it low income?
Right now, it's supposed to be low income.
Low income.
Is my understanding. You could do moderate on that site, you could do 10 moderate units. Your?
But low income is $72,000?
Right. Okay. So moderate is $77,000.
That combined, combined household income?
Household income.
For a family of four.
For a family of four.
Oh, so, and I did ask you one question because right now, two of those are one bedrooms and two of those are two bedrooms, correct? What about the child sex thing?
Look at that. Next on my list. You asked me a series of questions.
You answered it all.
One of, your first question was, can the housing authority acquire single-family residences? I think we've talked about that, we can.
Through a conventional loan?
Through a conventional loan. There are some challenges with that. The city doesn't always have the ability to do long-term debt. There are limitations on your ability to incur long-term debt. But there are ways to do it. So you could do a lease-leaseback, there's a variety of options. So we would have to look at what we were buying, how much we were talking about. But yes, there are ways to do debt to make that happen. Does the housing authority have to accommodate the sexes of children in separate bedrooms? Was one of the questions that we were asked. No, you do not. Now, if you have a one-bedroom unit, though, you can't, we would not be able to put in a family that exceeds the size of the unit. So I think for, is Amanda still here? I think for a one-bedroom, you would put in three people, based on your code. So you can't create an overcrowded unit.
Right. So they're there and then they have a baby. So there's the three in a one-bedroom, and then they get pregnant again, you've got to boot them out?
Right.
Yeah?
That's the idea. We don't want to create overcrowded units. We don't want to add to the problem.
Oh, yeah, because we're better than how they're living now.
We already have overcrowded units, we don't want to, we don't want to add to the problem. So the next question you add is, does a project have to be mixed income? Because that was one of the things we had talked about previously. It's not required to be mixed income. Now, sometimes your financing mechanisms will require certain income levels. So you qualify for, like, the County of LA has a lot of money available right now for housing issues. However, they require you to do very low income. Or they require you to do extremely low income. So you could do, take some of their money and do five of your units at very low income, and then use some of your money to do five units at lower, moderate. So that's how you end up with a mixed project because it makes the project pencil. You generate more rent, and so it makes it more affordable for the developer overall in the long run. But that, so it doesn't have to be. You could do all very low, you could do all low, you could do all moderate. The risk with all moderate is you will not be able to leverage your money. There are no funding sources out there, there's no grants from the county, there's no, you won't get the tax credits for a moderate-income project. All of the money these days is really focused on low to extremely low to very low.
And then I'm assuming that there's verification methods in place? So whether that's something that you have to turn in an affidavit, you have to, or something that says, I've only made this much money?
Yep. There's a whole monitoring process that goes along, and then there's annual review. There's compliance. So whoever operates this unit for you needs to go out every year and confirm that people are low income, that they're still low income, that they haven't moved in 12 people, that they haven't sublet to somebody. There's a lot of ongoing maintenance and monitoring requirements with affordable housing, which is one of the reasons that we had talked, you know, in times past when I've been here, about whether or not the city or the housing authority wants to really property-manage and be responsible for that, or whether you would hire someone. Because there are companies out there who do it professionally and are prepared to do that research and follow up with people and make sure that you're complying. Additionally, Additionally, every year, it feels like, there's changes in the law on what's required in the monitoring. It's a pretty complex area where people really have to sort of stay on top of it. So if you were to own units, our recommendation would be to hire somebody to do that monitoring component for you because it changes all the time.
I've got a question. I'm just going to try to brainstorm with you for a minute. So we have a deficiency here. I mean, it's the city, because we get, like, our experts, our experts in financing and accounting and our city manager, for instance, and then, like, right now, we're looking for, you know, a specialist in accounting. And that would be probably considered, I don't know, moderate to high income? So is there a chance, like, if we did the project at East Whitley, we could section out a couple of units for, and keep those just for temporary but high-income wage earners? Or maybe take two units and just keep those for high-income wage earners and then keep the others spaced out, like, four and four, for moderate, for low? Is that something that could be done with this? Because we do have a deficiency of, not so much, but we're finding that we're losing really good help, and we're not attracting the high-end kind of people that we need in management because we have a deficiency in real decent housing that I think that would be considered high-income housing. I mean, you know, let's say for our city manager or for our, you know, our accounting department, a harbor master, these are areas that, and also our doctors here in town as well, that, you know, we've been losing good staff to the community. So what, would you speak on that?
So that's a little bit challenging with this property because this property was bought with low and moderate income funds.
I see.
And so it's restricted to low and moderate income people. So if somebody's making more than that $77,000 or so number, they're really not supposed to be on that side.
And that's annually.
Right.
Okay, so...
But if you, is there some way to buy part of that? And that, the rest, you know, so you buy half of the property and, or half of the units, and they go to, that money goes back into the thing, and the rents that you'd get from the higher-income people would pay? I mean, could you mix them like that?
You could. We could, we would have to, we could subdivide the property. I mean, there's some ways we could get there to sell off a part of the property, but then none of the affordable housing money that would be used to rehab or build the new units would be able to go into those. So the city would have to fund the construction of that, we'll call it workforce housing, with unrestricted funds.
That would almost, that's something that we're facing right now, and I, you guys have seen that. We're losing, we're losing expert people in this town that we really need to house. And that's, this is getting into a crisis now, and I...
So on a, not on an affordable housing side, there are things you can negotiate in employment contracts where you give a housing subsidy and things like that, but that would be outside of these funds and this property.
I see.
So there's other ways to solve that problem. With the restrictions on this property and with these funds, it's really limited to people who make less than $75,000 a year.
I see. Is that something that we could work with CNC on where they could steer us in the right direction or guide us through something like that, where we take eight of the units and we make them low and moderate-income housing units, and then we take two, on a separate note, and they manage that for us? They understand what our situation is and...
I could certainly talk to them. We could talk to them about that. CNC is an affordable housing developer.
Oh, they are?
That is all they do.
Oh, that's all, okay.
That's all they do is affordable housing.
So maybe they could refer us to somebody?
But they may be able to help us. I mean, they could certainly help us with the dividing the property and those sorts of things, but the construction and long-term operation of non-affordable units, we'll call them, would not be within their purview.
And they could refer us out to the right people for that, or maybe you could do that, too, as well.
That's just not CNC's business model. They are affordable housing developers.
Understandable.
And right now, they're not working with us.
They are. They're still under contract with you.
Still are under contract?
They're still under contract until December of this year. But they're a little bit on hold because they were, their project was sort of tied up in this whole MOU discussions, and that's kind of been on hold. They have met with the island company, but they're, basically, they're sort of waiting for some direction at this point. They were proposing on a potential island company site to use the $3.84 million that was committed to them, which would, then they would combine with some LA funding and tax credit financing and end up creating 40 affordable units in the low and very low range. So your investment on that would have been about $4 million for 40 units.
Of low and very low.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, back to our questions. Someone had asked whether or not the Housing Authority can use a lottery system to select residents if we had units, and you can. We'd have to set it up with some fair housing law considerations in mind, but yes, there is a lottery system that is allowed. You asked if we can give priority to city employees. We can give priority to low income or moderate income, depending on what our restrictions are, city employees. And again, there's a lot of fair housing laws around that, but we have done that where we have set up systems that have been successfully used to give priority to city employees. But they're low-income city employees. So people making less than $77,000 a year, or $72,000 a year, sorry. The question we already talked about, you asked a conventional loan. So there are, it wouldn't necessarily be like we go to the bank and get a loan, but there are funding, financing mechanisms that we can use to help you carry some debt. There is what's known as the debt limit. It's a constitutional debt limit, so it limits your ability to do certain things. But there are ways of structuring financings that have been approved by the courts to not violate or to fall within one of the exceptions to the debt limit rules. So we could, we could structure something to make it work. If the, one of the questions posed was, if the Housing Authority sells the East Whitley site, does the city have to upgrade the sewer? So this one was a surprise to me. There is no law that says that, except you guys adopted one. So you guys have, in your municipal code, so my initial answer was no, and then I found out, I did a little research, and you guys have in your municipal code a requirement that prior to a sale, the sewer has to be upgraded.
But it doesn't matter, but either the buyer or the city. If the buyer wanted to pay for that before buying the property, he could.
Right. So if we sell it for $1 million, right, say the property's worth $1 million, but the sewer needs to be upgraded, a buyer is going to say, well, it's cost me a quarter of $1 million to upgrade, so I'll do the upgrade, but I'm only going to pay you $750.
Yeah. But we have to pay prevailing wage, and they wouldn't.
Right. What else? Oh, we have more questions. All right. I was asked, do we have to use a real estate broker? No. Normally, when we sell city land or Housing Authority land, your attorneys will do that, and so we don't pay it. However, if I sell your land to a third party, and that third party has a real estate agent that they've been using or a broker, we would have to negotiate with them because they are, they've already committed to a commission on that side. But from your side, you would never pay a commission. If the city were to buy the property from the Housing Authority, you would do that transaction entirely without a broker. That would be something that, you know, we are one of, your finance experts would coordinate for you, and so there would be no commissions on that type of a transaction. Let's see. If the city acquired the East Whitley site, what's the process and timing, timing and cost to condo the units? So I wasn't really clear on that question. It sounded to me like somebody wanted to put a condo map on it and be able to sell the units or parcelize the units. That process takes about six months and $15,000 to get through to the city.
I was thinking, so if the city bought the property and then decided to condo it?
It's about a six-month process, $15,000.
And $15,000 per unit?
Total.
Total?
To do, to do the condo map.
Okay.
But you need the money to upgrade the units so they qualify.
If the city and Housing Authority wanted to build additional affordable housing on the site, does the Edison tariff give priority? Maybe.
What?
Maybe. So there's nothing specifically in the Edison tariff that says the city gets to move up on the list ahead of anybody else, and there's nothing specifically that says low-income or moderate-income housing gets to move up on the list. However, there is one provision. There's an exemption for public need and necessity. So we would have to work, you know, with the company through the tariff process, and everyone would have to come to an agreement that this is a public need and necessity. So there may be a way to get there. Whether they've used that process previously for low-income housing, I don't know, but it's certainly something we could explore.
Well, you said, did you say that they already put a place card with Edison? What does that mean?
So they, my understanding from CNC was they, there was an application or something that you have to file to get sort of on this water allocation list. They did that, just so they're on the list. So anybody else who comes in now who wants to get on the list, they're below them on the list. So they have a spot on the list, and it described, my understanding is the project they described was the 40 or so plus units.
Right, so I just, I didn't know how thorough that had to be. I was talking to Amanda the other day about that, you know, do you have to have a project ready, or what does it have to be to get on the list?
My understanding is that it's not all that hard to get on the list.
Oh, okay.
But I can't speak to the specifics of it. So where does that leave us? So you have bond funds, about $4.3 million in bond funds that needs to be used for affordable housing purposes pursuant to your bond covenants. So that's low and moderate-income housing. And then you have what's in your low and moderate-income housing asset fund, which are your assets and funds that came over from your redevelopment agency. And those are the ones that are restricted by SB 341, where you can only use 30% for very low and 20% between 60% and 80% of AMI, and then 50% in the middle. But the bulk of your money is in the bond funds. So that's the low and mod funds that you can use. Your low and moderate-income housing asset fund is where all your properties are held, and then your accounts receivables. So there was some loans that had been made that will get paid back over time and things like that. When that cash comes in, that will be subject to the SB 341 restrictions, so it'll be much harder to use because you won't have much of it. And then, sort of just in summary, the options are the five or so that we've talked about: new construction, which was the path CNC was heading down, rehab, they've estimated about $100,000 a unit. It's kind of just a broad number because it depends on what the unit really looks like, where it is, and then the sewer costs associated with it. You could do rental assistance, you can buy single-family residence, or you can do a down payment assistance program.
On the bond money?
Mm-hmm.
Is there percentage allocation between the low and mod?
I don't believe so.
So we could take all the bond money and put it in the mod?
There are requirements to, for, could you put it all in mod? Maybe. I'd have to read your bond covenant.
Okay.
Usually, there's requirements in there, but I don't know the specifics.
Old bond is really old.
Before my time. And any more questions? We've had a few along the way. What else can we talk about?
Just one more. Let's say we, what's, what's alternatives as far as leaving, let's say, one unit open for, this is kind of crazy, but we have, you know, like, we have Scott coming over once or twice a week. We have to house him. We have to rent him a hotel. We have other experts coming over, consultants, advisors, and people that the city can hire, maybe a little construction crews. What's the chance of, like, leaving a unit open for the city to be able to use that at our disposal for different wage earners? Is that even something that's...
Not if the Housing Authority owns it.
Yeah, not with the housing money. Your housing money is restricted to low and moderate income.
Okay, so that's, okay.
Somebody like me, Scott, you know, if you bring over an accounting consultant like your accounting temp, they wouldn't qualify, most likely. I'm assuming your accounting attempt is going to make more than $72,000 a year, you know, and so we wouldn't be able to house that person in an affordable housing unit.
Yeah, I'm trying to paint a broad picture here, but thank you for knowing the answers.
I am often the bearer of bad news when it comes to these things.
That's actually not bad news for the community because that's what we're trying to provide the community with. So the city, we have our issues, and then the community has more pressing issues. Like Cindy mentioned, people are working three to five jobs, some people. They're working 16 hours a day. You know, it's really hard.
And that's really what this money, the state legislature is trying to get communities to gear this money towards, is people who are in overcrowding situations, where you've got two or three families living in a house because they can't afford to live on their own, or you have people who are having to work, you know, two, three, four, five jobs to be able to afford to pay their rent and feed their kids. That's not okay, and that's what they're really trying to get communities to focus their money on. In response to your question about, like, housing, your temporary accountant, you know, somebody like that, that is something the city could do, so we could take city funds and buy a unit, you know, but that would be a separate discussion. That wouldn't be these bond funds, and it wouldn't be in the name of the Housing Authority because the Housing Authority is limited to low-income type activities.
Cool.
Does anybody from the, because this is a tough issue. We're all facing it, you know? So any comments or whatever from anybody else, we really need to hear.
I did have just a couple of questions before we sort of get into the meat of it. One is, what is the status of the development agreement vis-à-vis Triana? Because the city spent a couple of $3 million to extend utilities out there and to do various things to get that property ready, and my understanding is that Mr. Flynn and/or his company had an obligation to build a certain number of affordable units and that that has not happened? Does anybody know what the status of that is?
I'm not familiar with it.
I can't speak to that. Do you know, all of you around, when that, when the...
Not one that you knew about.
I just vaguely remember, Pam, that it being that for each phase of Hamilton Cove that he did, he had to produce so many units at Triana. So is, if he's hypothetically, if he's doing 10 whole housing units out there, then he had to do his 10 housing units at Triana, and then when he goes to the next set of 10 houses, he has to do the 10 more ahead of time.
But he's got major, you know, multiple-unit buildings going up to. So in any event, it probably would make sense for somebody to dust off that agreement and see what's happening with that. Because to the extent that you have a developer who's required to build it anyways, it might make sense to leverage some of your funds to work on that project and either make it bigger. Additional units might make sense, and that's, my understanding is he has been granted property out there, so that's not a negotiable thing. That's something that's already locked in. The other question I had, so I had been doing a little reading because I'm not, I haven't kept up with a lot of this, about boomerang funds, and there was some additional property tax. Are we receiving any property tax increment into the Housing Authority at this juncture?
No.
No. And no boomerang funds?
No.
Okay. So we don't have any means of leveraging other than what we have?
We don't have any new money coming. No. This is a sort of blow-your-wad, or this is all we got.
Okay. So to my way of thinking, what the city's trying to balance is limited funds and needs throughout the community. And one of the things that I feel is important for us to look at is that we have many people who have housing insecurity, ranging from 40 people who are homeless and are being taken care of by the community church, for the most part, that the state has said we have an obligation to do something. And so it seems to me that there might be some way to use some minimum funds to get, to help that segment in our population. And I think that includes people who are, you know, couch surfing and then you get kicked out, but you've got a job, but you don't have enough money to put down first. You know, we know people in all of these segments. The other thing that really struck me is going through the, is it pronounced LEA, An Associates Marketing Study or Needs Assessment, is that there are many more one-and-two-people situations, a mother with a child, single mothers with one or two children, that it's not families of four and five and six so much as there's a good portion of that 349 needs falls within one and two people. And building a unit that houses one or two people is a lot different and different cost than building one that houses four people. So I don't know that, there was a good understanding when the 40 unit was brought forward by CNC as to what population was that intended to address? And, and have we done enough work to get a good understanding? Because some of these, this is just data that's pulled from a bank as opposed to really doing a needs assessment door to door, however you would, you know, do it to get more nailed down information. The other thing that really struck me is that our senior population is growing. That 13 units is filled up and the waiting list is lengthy. And we haven't really talked about, was there anything in the 40 units that was going to satisfy that need? So that was what I was struck by, is that we were, we were going to take a small amount of property in the most expensive area where we could be building and put 40 units in. And I think the community kind of had a knee jerk, and maybe you did too, because there wasn't a good understanding of who in our community is this going to serve? And have we really looked at the information that we've gathered together to, to make sure that we're doing, using that in the way that makes sense? And also keeping in mind, it doesn't make sense to move people from a bad living situation to another bad living situation. If you cram too many people into a site where they're fighting over parking, they have no storage space, and the list goes on, you haven't really improved things for people. And the, and the last point is, it seemed to me that there were some funds that we used for rehabbing that did not, that required that the person occupying met the income requirements, but did not require the owner to then charge affordable rents. And I, I don't remember where those funds came from. It might have been CDBG.
Could be.
Yeah.
Could have been home funds or a variety of programs.
Yeah.
These funds would all require.
And then I, and you, there wasn't really any discussion of all the bond proceeds and grant proceeds monies that the state has supposedly authorized and accumulated?
Right, so those are sort of like the funds I mentioned, like LA County has, because most of those funds come through the counties. They're all tied to either very low or extremely low or special needs. So like there's a grant program that just got released last week that you could apply for through March, I think it's March 18th, is the closing date. But it requires you to build extremely low for a special needs population and have onsite services, which is certainly a project that we could do. It's just a matter of whether or not that meets the needs.
Where that there's a needs and that wasn't addressed, that wasn't addressed in the.
Can you have a multi, multimodal 40 unit complex where you have 33% is moderate income, 33% is low, and 33% is extremely low?
Sure, that's what we.
And that's actually the.
Proposing.
Okay.
It's something.
Okay, I just got confused there because I'm, I'm thinking we have a need in all areas of our, of the community.
Right, so what CNC was proposing was exactly that. I don't know what the split would be, but it would have a range of incomes and then also a range of unit sizes. And I think their plan was actually focused on one and two bedroom units. It only had a few three bedroom units in it, but that was still just in talking. They hadn't really formulated anything because it was so early in the process. But it is not uncommon to do that. And then it just depends on how you score to get your TCAC financing. The more lower income you have, the higher you score, so the more competitive your project is. So the more subsidy you can get.
But you could go after, with a multimodal property, you could go after several different funding sources.
Correct, which is exactly what you.
And that was my final question, is there, none of the federal funds? I mean, we got with the senior project, there were three different federal funds through USDA and a couple of others that we accessed as well.
Most housing projects average about six funding sources these days, six to nine funding sources.
Yeah, because the CNC project was, they only talked about tax credit financing and there wasn't any mention of anything else.
Yeah, and that was, it's still just in.
Because it was so preliminary.
Yeah, they knew tax credit would be one source. And then depending on what the need was that we were trying to meet, and the council hadn't really clarified that direction yet. And if there were any special needs populations that we wanted to meet, whether it was seniors or veterans or, you know, something else, that would then drive the other funding sources that they would pursue.
Okay, great. So then I say, let's go back to looking at those numbers and really understanding where our population needs are. Because I think it's very varied. And I know it's easy to stay like, oh, extremely low and low and, and, but there are many people who fall into that category. I mean, someone who's making $11 an hour, which is the minimum wage now, there is nobody who works a full-time job making that minimum wage. They work several part-time jobs, seasonal jobs. And so there are a lot of people who are, are under that $22,000 or $20,000. Thank you.
And I think one of the, you know, is, is what to do with that East Whitley property? Because we're not using as it was intended. And so if, okay, so if we said, until we know what we're doing, we were going to have a direction, we want to put some low income folk in there. And then, and then we decide to do something, let's say at some point, we decided to sell the property, whatever, throwing out options. Then is there a certain amount of time they could be there before, before, or when we do or don't have to pay, or how does the relocation assistance work?
You gotta move.
So because they would be post-acquisition tenants, we would be able to include in their lease term or their rental agreement, a waiver of relocation. So we wouldn't have to pay it.
But if they have no place to move, they're just going to sit there, right?
No, if someone overstays their welcome, past their, you know, we would have to file an unlawful container action. I mean, we would, we would eventually be able to remove people, you know?
And it's, right now, with that sewer, the way that it is, it is not, that's okay, right? People can live in there with that sewer pipe exposed like that? That's not a big deal? I mean, it's a newer pipe, so it looks great. And you could, if it leaks, you'll really see it.
It'll be really pretty, but I, I can't speak to the sewer issue. We'd have to talk to Public Works. That's a little outside.
No, jumps right up.
I think, yeah, we could make some improvements to make it passable, you know? It'd be something more than a Band-Aid, you know, right now. If we had to do that to put somebody in there for short term, you know, whether you're talking that's a year or two. I mean, so, yeah, I think it's, it's very possible.
Okay, a community arts project?
There we go. Yeah, that, that's definitely, my voice that I want to have heard tonight is at least as long as, for four years at least, that property has been fairly vacant, except for a couple different, you know, someone here, someone there kind of thing. And, you know, I'd like to see this council move forward on doing what we need to do. Let's put some money towards this property and let's get it rented. And let's make it available to members of the community. It is, it's almost embarrassing that we didn't just do this early on. And unfortunately, I don't know why everything takes forever to do, but it seems like we just keep kicking some of these big subjects down the road to, I mean, I can list off at least 10 different projects that we've kicked down the road for waiting for this information, waiting for that information. And I really just want to see us utilize that property. You know, if we have to spend $20,000, $30,000 to put some, you know, safety mechanisms in there, redo some of the bathrooms, put a coat of paint on it and put some fresh flooring in, let's move forward and do it. And let's get them rented properly. And, and you know, we, we all took a lot of hits from members of the community because we had different participants in that housing unit that we had had, you know, Dennis in there, for example. And, you know, now we keep saying, well, we're going to do it. And that, you know, people would say, well, you've got some of your highest paid people there. And that was really difficult to be the recipient of a lot of angry people saying those things to us. And then, yet we still hadn't, we hadn't made any decisions. So I would like for us to walk away tonight with at least giving some direction to come up with what it's going to, like, come back, I don't care, the next council meeting, come back with what it's going to cost to get those units, how long, and let's move forward.
Let's get some people in there.
And then, and again, and then it could be moderate people.
Yes.
The 72 grand people.
Yep. 77.
77.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And Elizabeth's going to make sure that the lease has the no relocation clause in it.
Now, so can we talk about that property in terms of, because I don't, I don't know why we had to do, every time somebody came with this money to buy the property, we had to do it in closed session. So we can't really talk about any of those amounts of money that we were offered at previous closed session?
Current pending offers or?
No, no.
We don't.
Past offers.
Past offers. Yeah, those negotiations are closed. That's no longer confidential information. The reason you go into closed session when you have a pending offer is so that you can negotiate confidentially. If we sat out here and said, well, we have an offer for $5 million and we go, well, we really think it's only worth $2 million. I'm just going to come back and only offer you $2 million. So we do that in private so that we don't disadvantage ourselves in negotiations. But these negotiations, as I understand them, are all closed.
Yeah.
So.
So, so the most we ever got offered was about 1.9 mil for the property. And we all kind of think, but you know, it's the only thing we own. We'll never get 2.9 for it, I don't think, in our lifetime. We'll, and we'll never get that money back. However, I mean, I agree that, because I'm, I've been bummed that they've been sitting there vacant as well, or and misused. However, if we, as a council, say we want to get back on to the, to the concept of developing 40 or 50 units, if we feel that is a need, selling that property and putting that money into the low income or into the affordable housing, I don't know what's better, you know? I mean, because if, if the, let's say we got $2 million for the property. That $2 million going into that gives us more than what those four can give us. I, I don't know. I mean.
The, the city owns this property. And, and from what we've heard tonight, there's the possibility of leveling and getting 10 units or rehabbing the five and building five later on. I don't understand why we can't put some money, let's kick $200,000, $300,000 from the Housing Authority to get these units up to rentable. If we ever actually have a 40 unit property, which there's so many different things to look at, then, then there's the possibility of saying, okay, we're going to move these five people into priority housing into this new unit. And then we're going to take on the project of level and build 10 or leave five and build five more. I mean, we also have heard, sorry Pam, we've also heard from so many different people in the past, and some of us have also sent information that, you know, there is a market for tiny housing. There is a market for single unit or single person units. And, I mean, I could easily name, rattling names off of people who, college kids that have come back here, for example, single mothers who would live in a 350, 400 square foot unit, that they would be delighted to be able to live in that kind of affordable housing. I mean, we're just not seeing that, that a husband and wife, for example, or a couple, I should say, is needing a three bedroom home anymore. So I'm just saying, we can talk about whether or not we want to sell this project. At least in four years, I'll speak to my four years as a council person, we've never received an offer that we're, that we're going to take. So let's stop kicking it down, down the line. And let's put people, let's rehab those units and get people in them.
Move forward, exactly.
Yeah. I have been a big proponent for holding on to that property. I don't think the offers that you've gotten reflect the ultimate value. I mean, houses are going on flat for more than, flats for more than $1 million now. So it's not as if you're going to lose your investment in that. But the truth is that CNC presented you a project that did not require you to get additional cash together in order to make that 40 units happen. So it, it seems like you could actually do something right away to help four people, for.
10 families.
For a very, you know, minimal investment. I hope you'll give that.
Well, how did you say 10 families?
Because we could have five, it was feasible to put in five.
If they got the other 10.
Remodel five units and then put in five more. It was, it was feasible with the money that we have right now. We're, we're taking a big step backwards and I don't want to do that. I'm, I'm with Cindy on this. Let's, let's not move forward, let's take a big step forward and do something for the community.
Leslie. Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. So my understanding is the Housing Authority owns this property? Or does the city own this property?
The Housing Authority.
Okay, so the Housing Authority is guided by certain laws, right? So you could only rent to moderate income or low or very low at that property?
Correct, it can't be above moderate.
So moderate income, if I wrote it down correctly for four people, was $77,000.
Correct.
Right, so what percentage of that, of rent can they pay?
For a rental unit? It's about $900.
Okay, so, and then it's four units in the big green stucco house? And then there's the little cottage, right? Little cottage is a one bedroom? And then the, the units here are two bedrooms each?
No, two and, two one bedrooms and two two bedrooms.
Okay, so the money that you get, will that even, I'm just curious. I'm, I'm just curious, what is your property tax? Mine is $12,000 a year and I don't own a property like that.
Do we pay property tax?
We don't pay property tax.
You don't have to pay property tax?
Property.
Oh, good, yay! All right, so basically you just have to pay insurance and, and utilities and et cetera. So you could possibly have $5,000 or so.
Roughly.
A month income on the property until something else happens. Just trying to do the math, to just see how much money you're going to dump into it and how long it's going to take you to get that money back. If you say, like Cindy said, $20,000 into this property and you can get $5,000 a month, you're going to, you're going to recoup your $20,000 pretty fast.
But even if we were at a five-year return on investment for what we did, I mean, we, we won't have a 40 unit property built in five years. So from my perspective, it's at least doing something for now. And if we could, you know, if we could look at it in terms of, we could get 10 units on that property, regardless of how that happens, that's not going to happen today either, especially with our water system situation. But if you, so I'm looking at it in terms of, okay, fine. So if it's going to take us five years to, to recuperate that, it's worth it. To, to house four families, it's five families. It's, it's worth it. Yeah. Yeah. And I do want to say that I am not sure that that bungalow is, is habitable. So that may not be a fifth unit, but.
It's a, it's a teardown.
Yeah, just.
It's historical, my life is.
No, you take that and you put, and you just put a little tiny house on there. I mean, just a little, something cute. Yes.
I forgot. Mark L. 363 Sumner. Quick question. Why are those units vacant? Or why haven't they been rented? You, you say that the, you've got, you've got units there that haven't been rented. Why is that? That.
Partially.
That doesn't make any sense. And the other, the other thing that I would, hey, I, I don't need an answer right now. But the other thing is, Cindy, you mentioned 40 unit complex. Wonderful. Where are you going to put that?
The land that the island company was, was willing to negotiate was up Tremont. So you would renew Tremont Hall, relocate some kind of a community center and put it up there.
And, and how long are we going to be dead when that happens?
It was a three-year timeframe.
Oh, so unless you're going soon.
Once we have the land.
Mark, follow along with the, follow along with me for a second, okay? Because we've just answered all these questions for you. We initiated this conversation with CNC. We brought them on, they're our consultants. They're in the process of developing this plan, what it means, water, infrastructure, all of that. And we're currently on hold while we're trying to figure out, do we want to do this project and move forward? So there's still a lot of unanswered questions from CNC. But that, that is one avenue that we've been talking about for, for two, two years or so. Okay, so then, now we're, when we were first convened together as a council, we were learning about the East Whitley property. We, we were looking at the options of, do we, are these going to be rentable, inhabitable, however, the right way to say that is? And what will it take for them to be up to market standard? And in some cases, that number was so significant, but it never really made sense. We use that to house our consultants, which four years ago, we had quite a few consultants that were coming to town. And we used that to house them rather than to pay nightly hotel rates for them. So then over the past year and a half to two years, we, or two and a half years, I'm going to say, we had had that property up for sale. We received two, maybe three offers that we decided not to, not, not to sell the property. And I think in this last go around, the council made the determination that we do, we do not want to sell the property. So now here we are saying, okay, we're not selling the. So, now here we are, saying, okay, we're not selling the property, we no longer have consultants in there, let's do what we need to do to give it, to get it inhabitable and get it, get people in there that are looking for the housing.
And I under, I understand that, and I, I agree completely. But I'm hearing platitudes about, you know, single, single mothers and, you know, one person and all the rest of this. Talk, 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 there's no, there's no roof over their heads. I, I recently did something for a lady, she's living in, I've had a closet larger than that, and that's not a joke. She has a bathroom, that's wonderful, but her living space is literally less than 100 square feet. Now, you know, that, that just, that doesn't make sense. I mean, none of us, none of us here would do that.
I feel you.
I mean, would live like that, and I, and I, I think that, Cindy, you're absolutely right. The money is there, use the money, rehab the places, and, and do something with them. You're not getting the consultants coming in. And even if you do pay the money for the consultants, or even if you do, if you put people in those units and get them decent housing, it's worth it to pay the consultants. Because you, you've helped the people of, of the community. The consultants, they're getting paid, you know, they're getting paid a lot more than they should, personally, I think personally. But, you know, help the community.
Exactly.
There was also tenants in there, too.
Consultants.
Well, there is one tenant.
You do have a tenant.
Let them bring their own tents.
Well, I believe there was two tenants, and then Fergie lived there too, so, but your compassion and your empathy is definitely felt up here on the dais, Mark, absolutely. And I got family members that pretty much live in closets as well, and, and I understand that, and it frustrates me, it kind of infuriates me somewhat, but I'm, I just try to hold that back and try to reach a sensible conclusion, because we've all been fighting for this, and I think tonight is a good night, that we're making some decisions and we're moving forward. But we have been housing several people in those, in those houses up there, and over the years, we've been determining exactly what we needed to do with it, and it's, it's been a hard-fought battle, but we're moving forward tonight.
Well, what, what are we here feeling about this direction, about rehabbing these and getting people in there? Is everybody feeling pretty good about that?
It gets great direction.
Absolutely.
That was the, so you, sorry.
It gets good direction.
So, that would be a motion that I would make, is to direct staff to utilize funds from, it would be the Housing Authority.
It's the Housing Authority.
The Housing Authority to.
Why don't you direct us to come back to you with cost estimates?
With cost estimates, okay. So that would be a motion that I have something else to say afterwards.
And try to include that fifth unit, too.
Right, we'll, we'll get estimates on everything out there, and we'll have them break it out by, we'll, we'll treat that one with its own special price, just in case. I haven't seen that unit, so.
You ought to see that, man.
And then just, I don't want to convolute this, so can we finalize this direction, however, if we need to do a vote or whatnot, and then I have something else I want to.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Are you motioning or directing?
We're directing, but I don't know.
We're making a motion to direct.
You can make a motion to direct, thanks.
Any other comments? Okay.
Just on that item. Okay, so.
All eyes.
I, I want to be in favor of a housing project for 40 units for moderate, low and lower income. I, I'm very concerned about the possibility of a 40-unit complex and 190-unit complex, and having both of those together. So, I'm just gonna go out there on a limb and say, I have no idea, because I was never included in any conversations, I have no idea what this impact is gonna be on our community. I don't know what our capacity is truly for water, I don't know what the environmental impact would be to be doing both of these projects. And, and much to some's dismay, my, bringing out the whole MOU in the discussions and making that public wasn't because I didn't want to see the city and the Island Company do something together, it just wasn't done publicly, and it wasn't done to include the community. And so, I'm actually a little bit afraid to want to give direction saying, let's go do a 40-unit project, when we're now gonna potentially go down these two side-by-side paths with a 40-unit and 190-unit.
And, and I couldn't agree with you more, because, like I would say in those meetings, those 190 people, 190 units, and our 40, a lot of those are the same people.
No, wait, the hundred, the total project between the two places was 190. It was 150 down here and 40 up there.
No, but they were talking about, at the housing meeting, they said 180.
I think the number was 180, yeah. The number was 180.
They said it was 180.
Okay, but, but, and, well, that was kind of an interesting meeting, too.
So then it just brings up, and, and you know, I want the community to know that this is so, okay, so if you're gonna build, hypothetically, if you're gonna go and build a four-story housing unit, and you can get another 15 units by building a fifth floor, you know, it's so much more cost-effective to do it at the time that you're building, okay? So that's one thing to, to say out there. Then, you know, we've, the Island Company in years past has presented two different projects on that Tremont location for housing, and both times a planning commission sort of poo-pooed those ideas. So, my concern now is, what, is the, is the community gonna poo-poo the idea of the city building 40 units on this property? I mean, to me, there just seems like there's so much more conversation that I want to have. I'm, and I'm saying all of this, not because I'm not in favor of either entity doing housing, I want to see housing for residents, but I just feel like I have so many open questions, and I'm not comfortable giving direction, or, or, I'm not comfortable as participating and giving direction for us to go and do these 40 units until we really have a clear picture of, what are we all gonna do?
I had the discussion at one point about us getting a survey out there, to find out who they are, and part of that survey is, okay, first of all, what do you need? And, you know, how big are you, how big is your family, and try to get some income information, but then, and where are you employed? Because I want, I'm, I'm concerned that a lot of our people are the same people. And if I was somebody that had a choice to go into Island Company housing, or city housing, community housing, I would go there because, when I retire, I'd be able to stay, and if I got fired, I'd be able to locate and get another, I could get another job and stay on the housing. So I'm really curious more about what our numbers are and, and who they are.
If you weren't working for the Island Company, you're not gonna be moving into their housing.
I know, but once you're there, and you lose it, so I would rather move into our housing because those stipulations aren't there.
In other words, that's the only people who's gonna be living in their housing.
Oh, I know, I know that.
Anyway, these conversations can't even, really shouldn't even go forward without us talking about and resolving our water issues for the community that's here now, which we already have a deficiency of water. And then in our sewer system, we're talking about, we spend $100,000 every month, $200,000 on our sewer treatment plan every, every couple months, so, and, and it's not unbudgeted money, so, we can't even go there, this community can't even go in that direction.
But if, if we can, if there's some assumptions that some of those people that we, okay, people that are living two families in a house, and, and now, and said, now they can get their own place. So, that's the same amount of people, I'm talking about city, city housing, I'm not talking about Island Company, because, but.
We have to live within our means, though, and our means right now is 206 Whitley, and maybe getting about four or five families in there, or four or five individual, whoever you might say it is. Because I got some people, and it breaks my heart, to just know where they're living, and how they're living, and, 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 you know, they can barely make ends meet in this little closet space.
I know, I know.
And, and, and I see these mansions being built, and it's like, my, my family.
Well, and shame, and, okay, and then shame on the, on the landlords that charge those outrageous rents and don't make their places habitable. Come on, that's a big deal, that is a huge deal. That's why I'm having Amanda, she's supposed to be working on that home inspection program, you know, for all of us, because.
So we're a little off-topic.
But it's, but it's all, it's, but it's so frustrating.
I appreciate that. But the Brown Act doesn't necessarily account for that, so.
I think there's a possibility for, for us, you know, even, we started the process with CNC, and I guess what, what I, what the concern for me is, is that if we were to go forward with CNC and say, negotiate, do this 40-unit property, you know, do, are...
So that's not exactly how it would happen. So, at this point, they don't have a site. So, the city would have to negotiate with the Island Company or some other property owner, but right now, the, the most likely sites are all within Island Company control. So the city would have to go forward and, and negotiate, or they could on the city's behalf, negotiate a site for a project. And then, once a site had been preliminarily identified, then we would do, then they would do, the design and the EIR, and we're nowhere near all of those steps. At this point, the only thing that they were doing under the ENA that they had was the market study, holding the community meeting, and then working with city staff to try and identify a location. And they had, months and months ago, I don't remember exactly when, identified eight, nine, 10, I forget what it was, a variety of locations, and then was working on focusing those, and that's when it sort of got tied up in the broader MOU discussion. So if you want them to just go and focus on not all of the other MOU-related issues, but just focus on building a project here, then city staff with them could go and try and negotiate some property arrangement. Whether our Island Company would, I'm sorry, let me just, whether that Island Company would be amenable to that, or any other property owner, I have no idea at this point.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I beg to differ on, we don't have property, we have lots of property, there's some right outside of here, we can build up, there's some right on, on top of this building, there's some.
Right, so they, CNC did an analysis of all of the city-owned property already, and the most economic, economical, the most viable project was the one that they, they had identified and were working towards with the city manager. Which isn't to say that other projects couldn't happen, they're just maybe cost prohibitive.
Well, and so then, and sorry, Joseph, but, so then there was a comment that was at council meeting about what other, what other things did they look at? And I know, and you even made a comment, councilman, about, well, maybe we just buy a, a triplex, and put people in a triplex, and we, those kinds of things. And, instead of if we don't want to say, okay, let's do the 40 units.
There's gotta be 50 properties for sale on the island, so, and they, and they already have water, they already have their infrastructure.
Absolutely.
We could build on those, and we can just raise them up three stories, just like everybody else, three, four stories, we can buy two of them and, and connect them together and go up five stories, I mean, we have property.
Because that was the other stuff that you were asking, but we didn't get that, and that's when CNC kind of backed out, or not backed out, it backed off.
Right, well, they're, they're just in waiting mode to see what you guys want to do, because they're, they're here to get you a project that you want. If you do, if we buy a single-family residence or a duplex or whatever, that is not a project that will qualify for tax credit financing and the grant financing and those things. So, you have to bear in mind, you only have $4 million in cash, roughly. Four to 4.5 million dollars in cash. So if we're gonna spend $2 million to get East Whitley, you know, up and done, or, you know, whatever that dollar number is, you, you have a limited resources. So if we go out and we buy that duplex for a million dollars, I don't know what it would be, but, you know, a million dollars, each of that whittles down, because we only have one-time money right now. Now, again, if we want to do a special needs project, if we want to do a very low-income project, there's some money out there, and we could apply for all of those. I just don't want to set false expectations that we could go out and buy five pieces of property and afford to rehab them and, and do it all. Because all we have right now in the bank is four and a half or so million dollars.
Right.
So, I think we've made good progress, though, tonight, with the direction that you've given us.
Absolutely.
So we can certainly proceed with that, and we're not gonna solve all of this in one night. I wish we could.
I have another question, because we have your expertise here. At the housing meeting with, that the Island Company held last week, Mr. Wilhelm very, used very careful words, saying that inclusionary housing was a concept and so forth, and so I went back and did some research, and it seems that there's been some case law and some change up in that. Has the city taken a position with the Island Company as to whether it would be requiring inclusionary housing as part of their...
That was one of the discussions.
I'm sorry?
That was the discussion, that it would have been about 30 inclusionary units.
Right, which, under our ordinance is what would be required, but under case law, there's some question as to whether the city would be able to enforce that.
So your inclusionary housing ordinance is currently being updated.
Okay.
I wasn't, I'm not part of that conversation, I wasn't familiar with what that discussion was with the Island Company, but we are working on an update to your inclusionary housing ordinance, and then there was just new legislation introduced within the last week or two, on changing the inclusionary housing rules again. So, I'm gonna get your current, and then I'll get your current again.
Okay, so, for the time being, it's, it's somewhat up in the air, but we're hoping to, that things will move in the direction that that will be a requirement for the project.
Correct.
So I'm not sure how I want to say this, I was glad to participate in that, that meeting, but it seems to me that there's a lot of frustration on the part of the Island Company after having spent a year, I get that. I think there's a lot of fear on the part of people in the community saying, you're gonna build 180 units? That was activated, and there wasn't a lot of engagement. And my fear is that we're gonna run into another situation where a project solidified because architects have been paid, they've, a lot of the soft costs have been accumulated, and then the project is presented and it barrels along even when it's not the best for the community. And that's ultimately what all of us are trying to do, is what's best for the community, and that can mean a lot of different things, but I think one of them is preserving what is magic about Avalon. And I, for my part, mega buildings are not what's part of the magic of Avalon. I can get that on the mainland. And I know that it may be cheaper to build that way, but cheaper is not always better, newer is not always better. And so, if we can kind of think of those things and think out of the box, but I just feel that we need to somehow get on a different level with the Island Company so that they don't view us as enemies, or as if we're throwing rocks, because I get what they're trying to do, I just want the same respect for our, the position of the people that live here, too.
Exactly, very, thank you for your comments. The, so, do we want to, though, consider some kind of an assessment at some point for our local people, or we don't, we don't need that?
To look at an assessment.
To look at, to, to request, what, what, what do people, those people, for example, if, who, you know, do you need, this would be the people who need housing, and they would say they either need housing because they need to get in something bigger, because their family's grown, they wanted to find out why people would want to have their own place, or are people totally happy living two and three families in a unit?
But that was part of what CNC already did.
Well, how good do you think that was?
Well, I, I mean.
469 and 300 and something, something units, and that's, that's not talking about new, or revamped, or anything, that's talking about, based on a population this size, this is what you need to have, and people are living in some of those.
I thought we had a study like that already, that we did a few years back.
Well, we've done two, we, Mr. Flynn did one, uh, gosh, probably, I'm gonna say six years ago, I don't know how long ago it was, and then CNC did theirs.
But they didn't ask people anything.
Well, they, they did a demographic analysis. So you, I, we can certainly provide those to the council again if you don't have them.
Yeah, let's see if it really says anything.
And see what they say, and then the other opportunity, or the other option would be, after you've had a chance to review those, is, we can hire a survey company to craft an actual survey.
Well, I'd like to see us do something in-house, because, some kind of in-house, because we know the people in town, and we know, we can talk to people. I mean, I think that's a pretty simple thing, and it's a very simple, like, to me, it seems very simple, the kind of questions that we would need to ask them and to get a kind of feeling, and then if there's some formula to surveys that says you, however, those people, Survey Monkey figures throughout the rest, you know, Survey Monkey might be something that he uses, I don't know.
Right, it's a great idea, and how, how much more time is that gonna take?
No, we're still gonna move on with this, but, but, but when we're talking about those units, if we're gonna talk about Tremont, I think we need better data, because I don't think that that, that survey said, how many single families, how many, you know, how many one, two, three, four bedrooms we need.
But isn't that years down the road?
No, 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 I think that's...
No, both the, both the Flynn study and the CNC study looked at, at those issues.
Okay, Tremont, we don't own any property on Tremont.
That's why CNC, let's say somebody like CNC would... That's why CNC, let's say somebody like CNC would, and/or the city would negotiate for the Island Company for that property.
We still don't have the water in the sewers, and we go, I think we're getting off here, because we all know the demographics of people that live here, we all know people that are in poverty, they're living in squalor, they're living in something that's not, it's not affordable, and it's not dignified, and distinguished in any way, shape, or form. Somebody, most people would look at that, and they would just say, you live here? It's like, yeah, I live here, I raised my child here.
I know, but my concern is, if they build 180 and we'll be 40, do we really need 220 units? I just don't know that we need that.
No, no, we don't, we can't, we can't, this community is not, cannot sustain that kind of a population boost, you're talking about another thousand people, I mean, we can't even, we can't even give the people that we have enough water, or we can't dispose of their waste, right now, it's, but the thing, the infrastructure's falling apart, it's a ridiculous conversation.
Okay, well, you've got a direction.
I think I have direction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we're gonna continue this conversation. Any other comments before we adjourn the meeting and say goodnight to Tony?
Let's go.
And we're gonna adjourn this meeting.
I'm sorry, wait, wait.
[inaudible]
We're doing that now.
It's right now.
We're gonna close this meeting.
See? Yes. Goodnight, Tony, from the city council meeting, and then, there you go, sir.
Thank you so kindly, I'd like to call to order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meetings of Tuesday, February 6th, at 8:55. Could we have a roll, madam?
Trustee Sampson?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
And Chairman Olson?
Here. Announcements?
I have none.
I have none. Written communication?
None.
Presentation? None. Oral communication, members of the public may address the hospital board of trustees at this time, with no additional, no action will be taken. I just lost my agenda, because that man just texted me something. Well, no action will be taken on non-budget items at this meeting, speakers should limit their comments to three minutes or less. Ah, yes, ma'am.
I was trying to understand the financials that are in the, on the website for this agenda, and I wanted to know if you have a plan of how the hospital will pay you back for the money they borrowed for Leos.
For the money they borrowed for what, again?
For purchasing Leos. They borrowed money from you for purchasing Leos, correct?
No.
No.
They never did?
No, they got loans, they got private...
Oh, good, so do they not owe you any money at all, they're totally clear?
What we did, and the finance director can probably clarify completely, but what we did was give them sort of a line of credit, so when their operations income was low, they could take, like, a short-term loan from the city, you know, covering operating costs, and then when their receivables come in, they'll pay that back. So it's like, I understand it as being a revolving line of credit that they have with us, but it was only, it was not for the purchase of Leos.
Okay, so do they still have that?
Let Bob speak to that, please, finance director.
Thank you.
Yes, the city council, or, yeah, the city council authorized $340,000 line of credit. The hospital has borrowed the maximum right now, and they have, if I recall correctly, five years to pay that back, and there was interest accrued on that.
Consent calendar, we have two items on the consent calendar, one is the actions of the November 7th meeting, the other's the chief executive officers' board report and chief financials' report. Can we have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept items one and two on the consent calendar.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am, any discussion? Audience, call for a question.
All eyes?
General business, there's none. Chairs report? I have none. Members report?
None.
There's none, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Leslie, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
You knew there was money there somewhere?
Yeah.
There was money, they took it.